Okay.
Shall we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good morning.
Nice gabbling.
Good morning, everyone.
We don't look forward to it either.
Welcome to the March 22th Stearns County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call would indicate that all commissioners are present. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item today is going to be, we're doing a virtual years of service program, like we've done, I believe, the last two years. So we'll recognize our employees who are celebrating their work anniversaries with the county. We are recognizing 68 employees with anniversaries from July 2021 to December 2021. Combined, these employees have 830 years of dedicated county service. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Williams, for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everybody. Today, we do have the opportunity to celebrate those employees who are committed to the people of Stearns County. And as we all know, the past year, past year or two, actually, the past two years have presented Stearns County with many challenges, which has really illustrated that we have an employment full of dedicated, hardworking employees who really live out our values of professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable every day. It is our employees that fulfill our mission of really what I boil down to making lives better for the people of Stearns County. And so join the board and I today in honoring and recognizing those who have hit a milestone in their careers at Stearns County by watching our PowerPoint presentation, which I think will begin right now. Fantastic. Once again, thanks to all our employees who exemplify our mission and values. And we definitely want you to know that your dedication does not go unnoticed. So again, on behalf of myself and the county board, we appreciate you and your work in successfully serving the residents of Stearns County. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Commissioner Lenzamare?
I would look at the 10-year employees and go, gosh, I thought they were new. Now, I look at the 20-year employees and I go, holy cow, they're 20 years? It's a, the time warp factor there is, has an impact, I guess. Amazing.
Again, thanks. That's many years of service, 830. That's quite an achievement. So anything else on that, commissioners? Otherwise, we'll move on to the public access forum. This is a chance for anybody here wishing to speak on any items not on today's agenda. You'll be allocated three to four minutes to do so. And I don't believe anybody's on virtually. Correct, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay, otherwise, come up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Dawn Jensen. I live at 19413 Florence Circle, Richmond, Minnesota, Munson Township, on the lake. What we are requesting for consideration is a moratorium on short-term rentals located on a, on single-family parcels that are not owner-occupied and are located in the Shoreland Overlay District in Stearns County. We wanted to be very specific about single-family homes being used as hotels. And we want to respect the resorts with the multi-cabins. Just to put R1 or anything, it's too vague. So we really feel that the short-term rentals, the problems seem to be on the lake in the Shoreland Overlay. Want to leave alone any, you know, in-town bed and breakfast and et cetera, et cetera. So we really feel that time is of the essence. These things are popping up licensed and unlicensed on Airbnb, VRBO, all the other ones on there. And summer is just around the corner. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Anyone else wishing to speak on any items not on today's agenda?
Good morning. My name is Teresa Branster, and my address is 21067 Elkview Circle, Richmond. And this is also regarding the short-term vacation rentals. And I'd just like to speak to the board as a whole. My fir, our first concern, or one of the concerns, and there's three items, is our, the residents are concerned about the conflict of interest policy that the board has in place. And we'd like that brought up in the future and discussed with residents and/or at future meetings with the short-term vacation rentals. And the reason being is that we've had two board members, one on the planning and zoning that showed up at a township meeting, and I know he's also a resident of the township. But being on the board and then speaking in opposition to the short-term vacation rentals as well as being on the board, and I think that being on the board and using that position in those forums, I don't, I don't know if there's a conflict of interest, but we would just like that policy brought up in the future, the policy that's in place. And also, we had another one that wrote an article, which, you know, I think you have freedom of speech, but I would just like to know where, where that is at. And the other thing is, is the real estate industry stands to gain tremendously from short-term vacation rentals because of the prices that are being offered for the homes over the market price. So they're, they stand to, to gain in that particular area with commissions and things like that. So I would, I would ask that if there's any board members that are involved in real estate, that that would be something. And that's why we want to have it brought up, is to see where we're at with conflict of interest or possible conflict of interest. The other thing is the public ass, access. We come to speak at meetings and we're given two minutes, and which I understand that because you, you have a lot of things to cover, but this issue is getting bigger and residents want to feel that they're being heard. We were at the planning and zoning meeting the other night, and there, you know, some of the members are very cordial, very, and allow us to speak. However, my observation, that meeting, that the other night was, they spent more time discussing 10 issues that were in opposition to the permit that was to be granted than they did on the seven, or five to seven or eight different letters that were sent in by neighbors in that, in that area. It was sort of like poo-pooed off, and it was not discussed individually, but they spent a lot of time with somebody who does not live in the county, is not a full-time resident, and they went out of their way to make sure that they could accommodate that person when the residents were, their, all their issues were pretty much pushed off. So we would like a little bit more addressing of those specific issues in future meetings, other than just that IUP permit. I know that they're pushing it off to the townships, which is perfectly fine. Our townships are working on it, but I'd like to see the county work a little bit better with the townships. I asked that night, where's the process at? I know we spoke about it in January. I left for Arizona, I came back, and I asked the planning and zoning committee members, where is it at? And they said, we don't know. Nothing's been really done. The townships are working on it. We're gonna wait. We're gonna give it six months. But meanwhile, they continue to push and allow the, the vacation rentals to come in. This is in our neighborhoods, and we're concerned about protecting our neighborhoods, and we're gonna continue with that. And I just wanted to let you know that those are issues that we'd like brought up in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Joe Cockleman from 18579 Long Lake Road, Richmond, Minnesota. And I'm here requesting a consideration for a moratorium on short-term rentals located in single-family parcels that are not occupied by the owners and are located in the Shoreland Overland District in Stearns County. Recently just returned from a trip from Florida, and this is not an isolated issue to Minnesota. My sister rented a verbo, and part of the leasing was that there is a camera on the outside of the entry door, and they will monitor that the people who are on the lease are the only people staying overnight there. And it says clearly, no pets allowed, so if you brought a pet into this property, they would see that immediately, and you would be evicted. My other sister lives in a gated community down there, and they have banned verbos for the simple fact that they pay a lot of money for security because it's gated. And some, these are seasonal homes down there, so a lot of these people are renting out their homes illegally. And so they're saying, okay, we're paying all this money for security, and you're allowing these short-term people to be coming into our neighborhoods. They're accessing the pool, they're accessing the workout spaces. So what they have done down there is they've gone, done away with short-term rentals. It has to be either 30, 60, or 90-day rental terms. So I would hope that some of these things would take into, you take into consideration that it's not just a Stearns County issue, that it's becoming a invasion of a lot of people's privacies, and people are getting tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak, if?
Mr. Chair, I, I was approached by Mr. John Wood. He was gonna speak, and he thought he was gonna be able to talk, but I don't see him here yet. But I thi, I see we have it on the agenda till 9:25, but he wanted to talk about a different issue. So he had called me, so.
Okay, so.
I don't know if we just proceed, and if he shows up within the next five minutes, we let him speak?
Well, or can we grab him at the next meeting?
Yeah, well, he, he was here two, two meetings ago, and then we didn't have it last meeting, so. But again, I don't see him. It's up to you.
Okay, yeah, well.
No, we, we canceled last meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
Okay, no one else here wishing to speak at the public access forum? If not, we'll move on to the next portion of our, I guess, be approving our agenda. And I guess maybe in regards to this, we'll have staff maybe look into the short-term rental, and we'll hopefully come up with something we can maybe discuss in the future. I think that's planning commission was talked about too, is reviewing more of the.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, usually we don't, you know, we don't address it here, but we all know that's been controversial, and we've got one that we're gonna talk about when we talk about the consent agenda. And it continues to be an issue, and it's not gonna go away unless we do something about it, so.
And I guess I probably skipped over approving the agenda before we went to the. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Clark, second by Commissioner Persky to approve the agenda as presented, and any further discussion?
With the additions?
Well, this is, I was gonna have them on the consent part of the. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next is our consent agenda, and there were a couple additions besides the 24 that are on here. And one of them is setting a public hearing for April 26th on the amendments to ordinance 439. So that would be item D25. And then we have item D26, which is an application for the Sox Center Youth Hockey for gambling activities to be conducted at Link's National Golf Course in Sox Center. And then, and maybe we, well, I guess we're gonna maybe have some pulled. And then D7, we might have to have a little more conversation on as well, because we do have a letter from the county attorney on, on that approval. So are there, I know, I guess I'll bring it up right now, 14 and 15, we were going to pull, and then we may as well pull D7 as well and have a conversation on that. So with that in mind, can we approve the rest of the consent? We'll leave off D7, 14, and 15?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Mergan, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, should we do number 14 first, which is a conditional use permit for Alan and Michelle Locke? Shelley, do you wanna just kinda go over what we should cover?
Mr. Chair, after review of the conditions associated with the conditional use permit submitted by Alan and Michelle Locke, we found that they do not need condition number two. So we ask that you remove condition number two prior to approval. And the approval was recommended by the planning commission.
Okay.
A move for approval with that condition removed.
Okay, you had a motion by Commissioner Mergan. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then item 15 is a interim use permit for a short-term vacation rental. It was approved four to three, I believe, at the planning commission. Shelley, you wanna add a little more insight?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. The planning commission made a recommendation on a split vote, four to three. I think what you have seen since that meeting is a significant amount of email related to that, and I think there are some issues that, that need to be talked about, specifically related to that particular item and that location on that property and how it's being considered. So typically what happens when you do something different or look at that item differently, you want to have your own public hearing, so we would suggest a public hearing for April 26th, probably at the, sometime after 9:00 a.m., at your regular meeting.
Okay, looking for a motion to set that public hearing for April 26th?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Persky, second by Commissioner Mergan. Any further discussion?
Just that, yeah, that, there was quite a bit of conversation about that and a good number of opposition to that, so it's worth bringing back. Even between the board, they're split as far as which direction we're going with that, so.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then maybe a correction. I think I said pull seven, but I think we were adding seven, was it eight?
We're, we're just adding a condition on the Albany one, I guess, is what we're looking at.
Okay, so that actually, okay, so that was with the Kimball one, then. Okay. I don't know, do we need any clarifications?
I would say for the Albany Sportsman's Club, you saw the letter from the attorney's office, and I think they're here if you'd like to talk to them. But the sheriff's office hasn't approved it yet either, so I think we would, if you could do a contingent on the sheriff's office approving it.
Okay, so we could, it could be approved?
Yeah.
Contingent upon sheriffs. Okay?
Do we need a motion on that?
We would need a motion.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Persky.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Clark to approve the Albany Sportsman's Club condition on the sheriff signing off on the permit. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, that gets us through that large consent agenda. From here, we'll recess our regular meeting and go to our Human Services Board meeting. Morning, Melissa.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Melissa Huberty, I'm the Human Services Administrator. And there are only two items on the Human Services Consent Agenda today. The first item is on page 167. It is E1, and it's Claims Paid on behalf of Human Services Clients. The second item is number E2 on page 169, and it's to approve our resolution to continue our joint powers agreement with the Department, the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to access the state's criminal justice system or justice data communication network, which is required by us to renew it every five years. With that, I'm available for questions.
Anyone have any questions for Melissa? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Have a good day.
You too.
Mr. Chair, I see Mr. Woods here.
Okay, we'll reconvene our regular meeting, and if Mr. Woods would like to take a couple of minutes to, or maybe he needs, would, would, Mr. Woods? We, we, we're done with the public access forum, but we'll, if you wanna speak at this meeting, being you didn't get a chance to get here. And, and I'm assuming it's not on anything on the agenda today, correct? I'll, I'll wait till you get up to the microphone. Just state your name and address.
My name is John Wood. My address is 8 Lowell Circle, Sartell, Minnesota, 56377. Okay, and I come to the Commissioners' meeting today. I'm with the Sartell Park Residents Association. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. And what this is about is addressing issues with the living conditions and situations and issues that are going on with the Sartell Park Residents that's caused by the owner of the company, Impact, or the owner, the owner of the MHP. MHP means Manufacture Home Park. Okay, and I have, what we did is I addressed the city with it, and they gave me a correspondence letter returned. And then we went to the City Council meeting, March 14th, and here are the results. I'd like to pass this on to you. It'd be a quick study.
If you wanna just hand them all to Terrell, she can pass them down. Thanks. This park is in the, in the county, right?
It's in the, inside, it's in the city.
I taught Columbo how to walk. Anyway, to begin with, the first correspondence letters returned, reply to me. I addressed the city, Sartell City Council on, on several issues that was happening at the Sartell MHP. First letter's from Anna Gruber. Says, hi, John, thanks for reaching out for the attached letter. We appreciated your feedback and input, both via this letter and at our council meeting. I have also BBC, the full city council, on this reply, so they are aware that you have been provided with response. We have looked into your concerns multiple times and also consulted with our city attorney regarding the matters. Unfortunately, Sartell Mobile Home Park, this is Stearns County licensed property, is now within the jurisdiction of the city of Sartell, and the only entity that may be able to assist you in this matter is Stearns County. Any invented is helpful. Please feel free to attend one of their meetings or speak with one of their commissioners. And it gives you the web link to your meeting. While we would love to assist you further, it is simply not a property within our jurisdiction that the city has any authority over or control over. It is privately owned and operated. Mobile Home Park is licensed by Stearns County, and it was in, it is within the county jurisdictions. Okay, the next page consists of, we went to the Sartell City Council, and fellow board members spoke at the meeting. Okay, and basically, we're asking for their assistance. Okay, and basically, we're asking for their assistance and to help us look into the, and try to resolve these issues, and we're asking for their support. Okay, this is a Sartell City Mayor and City Response. Okay, addresses the council before we move on and want to highlight and respond to some of the concerns that we heard tonight. And then the mayor addresses the assembly. I want you to know that our city council, we hear you, but as the city and the state of Minnesota, we do not regulate mobile home parks. This is at a county level, and sitting in the audience tonight is County Commissioner Joe Persky, who is the one that absolutely takes action. I have heard of rent control and rent increasing and utilities increasing for me. That is rent control and what they are doing to your rates. This is management conflict, right? We won't go into details on that, but it sounds like there's management conflict with the resident and management. That all could be capacitated, incapacitated at a licensed level. The overall park, again, that licensed level does not rest at here, unfortunately. He goes on to explain, it rests at the county level, so our commissioners that represent you at the county level is here with you tonight, and certainly he is the one who can take direct action, specifically licensed of the overall park. We as a city cannot. We provide public safety services to the park, but that's it. Unfortunately, where the extent of our, of our control rests. And again, we hear you loud and clear. We sympathize with your loss, absolutely. Referring to my passing, my wife. Unfortunately, legislatively, we do not have the utilities that are available to us to take what you are asking for tonight. Again, I encourage you at a county level, that is where the license issues lay, and that's where it's from. Again, thank you for coming. We appreciate you making it public. We appreciate you for coming. This honored the mayor, City of Sartell. Okay. I wrote down in my own notes, plan of action to the mayor's response. As I see it, even though there's three hundred and sixty-five estimated residents and city citizens in Sartell MHP, I don't know how many park residents and MHPs in the city limits of Sartell. I believe there's four. I might be mistaken. The city cannot help us, also because of the private entity laws that they're referring to. The Sartell MHP jurisdiction is assigned to Stearns County Commissioners. Even though we residents, city citizens reside here, work here, are retired here, and our children in Sartell, St. Cloud School shop and conduct business local, locally, we vote at city and county elections, attend area churches, attend social events and parades in both Sartell and St. Cloud locally. We resident citizens, because we reside in a MHP, cannot have the city of Sartell back and support, et cetera, that is offered to the other city resident citizens that do not reside in MHPs in the city of Sartell. And I feel that they shifted all that and underduties responsibility solely over to the county level. What I'm asking for today is we need your help, advice, assistance, backing and support on not only about, on us, our residents, but our issues. Thank you. With the Sartell Park Residents Association, I'm John L. Wood.
Thanks, Mr. Woods. We'll have administration look into it and, and go from there. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for taking the time.
You're welcome.
Bringing it forward.
And I'd like to take this time to ask, at this time, if it's possible, if the Sartell Park Residents Board can set up a private meeting with you Commissioners to discuss issues in detail. It'd be about an hour meeting, perhaps a Zoom meeting. And also, if we could have permission, there's, if I'm not mistaken, a county commissioner meeting coming up that covers the state, all the state counties. If we would be granted to speak there at issues, because I, and then corresponds with other counties in Minnesota, that their MHPs are going through a same situation as we are.
Yeah, at this point, though, we'll have administration look, review everything, and then get back to you and go from there.
I'll sit down and shut out.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District with Mr. Fuchs and his lovely crew. Oh, I think, are we going to get cookies? Oh, look at that. Oh, it's cookie day. Happy agriculture day, too. Here's agriculture day.
Stop the tape.
Thanks, thanks for the cookies, Tom. Maybe I'll share them. All right, I believe Dennis is going to give us his annual report.
You'll be able to advance it now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Dennis Fuchs, Administrator of the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District, here to give our annual update from 2021. Picture there of our Stearns SWCD Board of Supervisors. On the left, you have Tom Gregory, Ken Sheffers, Matt Bruett, Arlen Lorenz, and Chuck Hopoff. They're all here in attendance, and Matt Bruett, the guy in the middle, is the board chair in 2022. County Commissioners need no introduction, but very important part of our SWCD team. In 2021, we were able to get out and do a lot of educational activities with our residents. In upper left was a pollinator pint at Pantown Brewery, some soil health activity, looking at infiltration rates. Upper right was a clean up the highway, the road that runs through Marty, want to keep that clean for the St. Patty's Day Parade, and some other activities down on the bottom. If you look at the slide, it got a page number, oh six, that corresponds with the page number in the annual update. And if there are any questions, please let me know, and I'll try to answer them. The budget, operational funding, this is to keep the lights on, staff paid, and you can see that we're pretty close to that, two point three million. And I just want to say thanks to the board for that stable funding, what they provide to the SWCD really allows us to maintain a stable workforce and leverage additional grants, and also allows a lot of our partners to pursue additional activities in Stearns. The project and program funding, these are payments that go out to landowners. As you can see, the greenish colored bars is federal funding, the bluish is state, and then the local funds are the ones that are kind of tanish in color. As you can see, we're bringing in a lot of dollars. There has been a decrease in federal funding recently, and part of that is our environmental quality incentive program, dollars that go to help farmers fix the resource or address the resource concerns such as manure storage facilities, and we're working on trying to increase those dollar amounts. Our West Central Technical Service Area is an area that we have engineer and a few technicians that provide assistance with our neighboring SWCDs. This is paid for by state and federal funds for this technical assistance, and you can see the variety of projects that are occurring across this area, with most of them occurring in Stearns County. Our NRCS team, Chris Hogan on the left, the team lead, who happens to be in the audience today, and a couple of his staff, Lee Sabinski and Bonnie Habenschall. Our outstanding conservationist in 2021 was Steve and Cheryl Schlangen, and there's a picture of them there. They've done a lot of great things on their farm, and he's very active politically, too, to help our farmers in Stearns County stay profitable and sustainable. Looking at some of the field days that happened this past year, we had the Soil Stewardship and Nutrient Management Field Day. Commissioner Lenzmeyer was in attendance at that field day. We had a prescribed grazing field day, and also, we had some outreach activities with the Boho Cafe in Holdingford. We had a, missing the title on a couple of these slides, but we had some Ukraine farmers visit us last year, and what a great opportunity to showcase some of the things that we've got going on in Stearns County and with the world affairs going on right now. They have been, they have emailed staff to let us know that they are safe yet, and that they really appreciated all the work that we could do, and they probably will not be visiting us this year. Minnesota Ag Water Quality Certification Program. You can see that we've got a lot of certified farms in Stearns County, and we've got one hundred and seventy-eight assessments completed with eighty-seven certifications and almost fifty thousand acres certified here in Stearns. As you can see, the folks that get certified also get a sign and a twelve-pack of beer from Third Street Brewery. The brewery has been very supportive in, in this activity because they understand the value of clean water. The city of Cold Spring is putting in a nitrate removal system, which is costing millions of dollars, and they really appreciate the work that farmers are doing to keep the nitrate and fertilizers in the crops and out of the groundwater. The Headwaters Ag Sustainability Partnership is a special project we've got going on, and we're looking for solutions that benefit the environment, economic viability of farmers and rural communities, and it serves both agriculture and environmental communities as a forum where innovative ideas can be considered. We've got a couple of partner-led projects underway. One of them is All Acres For Our Water. It's a special project with the Nature Conservancy and a private donor that has provided some funds to accelerate conservation practices in the Bacchus Lake area, which is between farming Richmond and St. Martin. And we also are working on an ESMC pilot project. They're looking at fifty thousand acres in the upper portion of Minnesota to participate in that, where farmers that do additional conservation practices get paid for the work that they're doing in carbon sequestration, water quality improvements, or water storage. And it could be twenty to thirty bucks an acre for a farmer to implement those additional conservation practices. Then also, we've got the Return on Investment Study, and Supervisor Tom Gregory and his family on the right are participating in that. And what we're discovering, working with the Ag Centric Staples Community College, is that folks that are certified are making a greater return on investment for the conservation practices that have been implemented. The One Wash for One Plan, I'm sure you've heard from your Environmental Services Department team, Cole Lowen, who's been very active with supporting us in this activity. The North Fork and the Sock have been completed, and we're currently working on the Mississippi River St. Cloud, and Mississippi River Sartell will probably be rolling out in 2023 or 2024. This has been a great opportunity to work with new partners, but also, it takes, it's a little challenging, and I think Commissioner Clark has been participating in the St. Cloud Mississippi River, and it definitely brings new partners together and new ways to work together, and it's a little bit challenging, but we're hoping that we can increase efficiency as we move through these plans. Just looking at some of the projects that were completed, there's a lot more details in the annual update on page twenty-two, but you can see they, they are throughout the county. It looks like they're scattered, but we really are moving toward a more targeted approach to helping folks that have resource concerns. So some of the folks that aren't in a targeted area often have to wait a little bit longer for technical assistance from our office as we address the ones in the higher priority This is the St. Cloud Lake George Project. We did a stormwater project with the city of St. Cloud, and as you probably have heard, the Lake George will be de-listed from the TMDL list. They have addressed the nutrients coming into the lake. They have done some alum treatment to help tie up any legacy phosphorus in the lake, which will hopefully keep it clean for the future. Also, we did a wetland restoration in the Cold Spring Wellhead Protection Area, which is going to provide cleaner water to groundwater, which ultimately will improve the water resources for the city of Cold Spring. Stacking slabs are a huge workload item for our staff. We are working with NRCS and technical service providers to take some of that workload off of our plate. When I mentioned earlier that the Environmental Quality Incentive Program funding has been reduced, it's because of the number of projects like this, which can easily come to a quarter million dollars in financial assistance requests. So this is something that we're continuing to work on. Our board is also considering a resolution through the State Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts to require all new poultry slabs, all poultry barns to have a required manure management system as part of the new barn, and it's going to increase the cost for, for the poultry farmer, but ultimately, I think we all are willing to pay another nickel for a pound of chicken to have our resources protected. Here's a erosion control project that occurred. This is a massive gully that was stabilized with the grass waterway. We've been very active with getting cover crops, and I encourage you, as you drive through the county, to look at fields that have and don't have cover crops. If fields without cover crops, we got a lot of work to do. And we've seen excessive wind this winter, a lot of snow, soil moving off, I call snirt, in our road ditches, and that's going to be directly transmitted to our surface waters, which is going to result in additional problems. When fields look like this this spring, we just have less problems. And you'll see those cover crops after the rain today and the warm weather this weekend, they're popping. You're going to see green, green islands out there, and that's what we're trying to do across the county, is to see more of those. And folks like Tom Gregory, a dairy farmer, has been able to utilize cover crops in his rotation as a forge for his livestock, which really is saving them some money and protecting the soil. This is a no-till drill going into a cover crop with soybeans. We're seeing a lot of this type of situation, too, where the area is protected in the spring, like I was mentioning, and then you're no-till directly into that crop, and your soybeans will emerge from that and still maintain great yields. This is Boyer Point on Rice Lake. This is a project we did with the Conservation Corps. They put a lot of people hours into this point to stabilize it. Without the work and stabilization of that point, it probably would be gone in a decade or two. Bacchus Lake is a special project area that I mentioned earlier as part of our HASP project, the All Acres For Our Water. We also received a special USDA NRCS grant called the Mississippi River Basin Initiative for this area, which is going to result in two point four million dollars in equip dollars for farmers to address resource concerns in that area. So it's a very targeted area within Stearns County that was delivering a fairly high load of sediment nutrients to the Sock River Channel lakes, and our goal is, in a five-year time period, to reduce those loads by twenty percent with farmer participation. And currently, we have five animal waste management systems targeted with those funds for construction this summer. The Kernza is also another special project we've got going on, funded through the Environment Natural Resources Trust Fund and recommended by the Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources, LCCMR, and we are looking at how Kernza can improve water quality, and we've got partnering up SWCD up in Pope at Westport. They got the Rosschild Research Farm there, where we're actually looking at irrigate it and dry land on a Falfa Prairie and Kernza, and you can see some of the yields up there. What you will notice in 2021, if it was irrigated or dry land, the Kernza grain, that's the seed from intermediate wheatgrass, the yields were dramatically impacted. And what we're discovering is that the heat that we had when it was flowering really impacted the seed development. So now the, taking that information, but they'll bring it back to the Kernza breeding pro- So now they, taking that information, they'll bring it back to the Kernza breeding program and try to identify strains of Kernza that can better withstand that heat in July so that it can continue to produce more seeds. It's a dual-use crop, so you can use the Kernza for breads and beer. As you see there in the middle, that was a beer that they developed and created over at the Minnewaska House near Glenwood. But they're also working with Ag Utilization Research Institute, looking at a variety of products that can be made with Kernza. And the product there, on the seed on the left, is with the hulls. And once you remove the hulls, the seed is very small. You can see it in the palm of my hand there. It's a very small seed. So they're also looking at use for that hull, you know, like whole wheat or whole Kernza provides a lot more fiber nutrients than some of the products that they're exploring. The Wetland Conservation Act, we're not the local government unit, Stearns County is, but we provide support on the technical evaluation panel. And if there's any WACA Wetland Conservation Act violations, we assist with that and also help with wetland bank project review and also wildlife exemption site visits. Ditch compliance, we're at 99.9% compliance. There's only 11 that are out of compliance and we've made progress with some of those, too. We are not the regulatory component. The county is not the regulatory component. The county could be the regulatory component if they wanted to be, but right now, the Board of Water and Soil Resources is the regulatory component for this. So if there's a site that's out of compliance, we inform Bowser and they take care of it. The county could receive over $100,000 if they wanted to take care of those 11 non-compliance sites, if that's something that you'd like to take on.
So Dennis, can I just ask you a question on that, then? So if Bowser is doing, does it just take longer then to get through the process because it's a higher level?
Yeah, and we haven't seen a more efficient unit like Stearns County doing it. So it's, we don't really have anything to compare, but it does take time. You're working with the judicial system. And there's also time for them to get the buffer seated and established. So, and our staff person, Ben Rulli, who's been working on this, has bent over backwards to be friendly with our farmers because we understand what this means to them. And, you know, you're taking some land out of production. Looking at some of the alternative plans that are also up there, 198 alternative plans. A lot of times, we could reduce that buffer width down to 16 feet by looking at some other conservation practices, such as reduced tillage and other practices.
If Stearns County was to take this over, you talked about the revenue side. What would be the cost to the agency then to perform this?
That's, I would have to get some additional information on that, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, but...
You know, personnel costs, you know, salary plus benefits.
But I can follow up with you on that.
It might still be a loser.
Yep, you bet. I'll check into that and share that with Shelley.
That's not critical. I just want, when you come forward with these ideas, just tell us the rest of the story. We're big kids.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Just a prelude to some of the other projects that are coming here online in 2022. We've got our Sartell Riverside County Road 1 project, working with the Stearns County Highway Department and the city of Sartell on stormwater management along the Mississippi River there. And we're excited to get that project completed this summer. And then the other grant that we received through Bowser through the Clean Water Fund process is the Northeast Priority Bacteria Reduction Project in the northeast portion of Stearns County. This is an area of the county that currently doesn't have any One Water for One Plan funding. So we're using these state funds, about $400,000, to help farmers and landowners in this area address manure management and reduce the fecal load that enters the Mississippi River. And that's the conclusion of my talk. And I just got a mission statement there, to enhance the soil, water, and natural resources necessary for productive and profitable agriculture, safe and affordable drinking water. When I say affordable, that's where you don't have to put in a multimillion-dollar nitrate removal system when you work with landowners on the front end. You save that cost and wildlife habitat for all Stearns County residents, businesses, and visitors. Thank you, county commissioners, for listening.
Thanks, Dennis. I just have a couple of quick questions. So the Mississippi River Sartell, that's going to be a watershed?
Nope. It's a one-water for one plan. It's going to be...
Oh, okay. It'll have its own one watershed, one plan, just like the St. Cloud one will.
Yep, just like the Sock, which you participated in, and the North Fork.
And the last one I had is, I noticed you had a drone on there. Does that come in pretty handy for your office?
Yes, it works very well for educational activity and highlight and capture projects as we share our projects with our landowners and what it looks like and the public. The general public are like, you know, Lake George, what'd you do? All I see is a parking spot. So having a drone up there to capture that and where it is in conjunction with the Lake George, and then also the storage and stormwater treatment system under the parking lot is pretty amazing. Yes, we haven't, we don't use it for buffer analysis. We work with the landowner to get permission to go out there. And we're not flying the county, looking at buffers to see if they're in compliance.
And it's good to see that you're having the stacking slabs covered, because I remember a couple of years ago, we did that tour. And I think the one poultry producer, you know, was in, he wished he would have had it covered right away, but...
Yes, and that's now part of, it's a required, have a roof on a stacking slab. So, and the demand for them has really increased. Pilgrim's Pride increased in production. In Cold Spring, we're just seeing a lot of additional barns coming up in the region. So the demand for that. And that's where we'd like to see that included in the upfront project costs and utilize it, spread those funds for other folks.
Anyone else have a comment? Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Dennis, first of all, thank you, thank the board and all the worker bees for what's going on out there. It's greatly appreciated. I got a bunch of questions, but I'll limit it to just one. That's relating to the till. You know, we see the shift over going to light till and no till from traditional. How much, what percentage of the farmers do you think are now doing non-traditional?
I'd say, you know, the mobile plow is still happening on a few farms out there, but a lot of them have now transitioned to chisel plowing, which is kind of our baseline. And we're trying to move now into strip till and no till. So I'm guessing probably majority of the farmers are doing chisel plowing and in a small percentage, 10%, probably are doing the strip till, no till. Yeah. And cover crops, so you'll see places like around Marty or Pearl Lake, you know, where Tom Gregory has kind of spread the gospel of cover crops. You're going to see a lot, I mean, it's like an island of activity there. So we're really trying to get more and more farmers to be a local champion of cover crops. And it takes a lot of effort and they, the farmers appreciate hearing it from other farmers instead of somebody like me.
And what's usually going in on that cover crop?
In the fall, it's a lot of times just cereal rye. It's a very simple, and that'll come up in the spring now, and that is what you see. You do more diverse mixes, which provide other soil health benefits. But if you're just going to get started, either oat, which would die in the winter, it doesn't come up in the spring, or cereal rye, which is like winter rye, that'll come up in the spring. And you'll see that greening up this time of the year.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. Thank you again, not just for being here, but for all the work your staff and board members do, just frankly, the one watershed, one district commitments, the work that you've been doing on an array of other things. Thanking the two members that are part of our DAC, I mean, it's all really important work. And it's really great to be following the Kernza project. And as you're seeing more places or more opportunities, helping, I'll speak for myself, helping me be better educated and maybe getting to participate in some product is always a good thing, whether it is the bread or the beverage, for instance. Maybe there'll be an opportunity for us to have a field trip at some point.
Thank you. Yes, and I know Beaver Island Brewery here in town explored some development of Kernza beer. And it was just a small batch. Sorry, I couldn't share.
Yes, I hope they revisit that. That would be great.
Well, you're still here, so it must have... Anyone else have any comments for Dennis? If not, thanks for the report and thanks for everything you guys do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we show a break for 10 o'clock. Does anybody need one right now? Okay, I'm seeing head nod. Okay, so we'll take a five-minute break. And I have the cookies right here if anybody wants them.
If you would pass it though.
I was gonna say...
If you would pass it.
I was gonna say...
Order. Our next item is Parks Department. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ben Anderson, Parks Director. Bear with me, I found out I have an ear infection yesterday. Who knew adults get ear infections? But, so, I'm hearing everything twice. So, if I'm not speaking loud enough, let me know. And if I go, huh, because I didn't hear you. So, thanks. The agenda item is G1. Packet pages 180 through 185, and it's a request to adopt a resolution supporting the development and implementation of US Bicycle Route 20. A few weeks ago, the county was contacted by MINDOT, and they told us they're working on to designate a new US Bicycle Route, USBR 20, which will facilitate bicycle tourism and transportation in our community, across the state, across the nation. The US Bicycle Routes are bicycling routes that have been federally recognized by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, and there's a national vision for a network of bicycle routes connecting urban, rural, urban and rural communities via signed roads and trail accesses across the country. MINDOT has identified the USBR 20 as a high priority corridor in its statewide bicycle system plan. Besides connecting bicycles to numerous local communities, points of interest, and services, it will travel through three major metropolitan areas: the Twin Cities, St. Cloud, and the Fargo-Moorhead area, and tie Minnesota, the Minnesota Network into the Wisconsin and North Dakota Networks. The proposed route is a ride-ready route following state and regional trails that are already developed. And then with part of the route, as you get up closer to the Fargo-Moorhead area, past Fergus Falls, it would actually turn into on-road. This, so how does this route affect our community? This, the proposed route, developed through the data analysis and public input that MINDOT did, travels through Stearns County on the Lake Wobegon Trail. This is not a proposal to build new infrastructure. The USBR 20 is a designation only, is an intended, and is intended to complement, not compete with local bike, with local bicycle facility planning. So on a community level, this designation will be helpful in securing future funding for maintenance and development. It'll bring more people into the area, boosting local economies, and it'll bring more national, state, and even regional attention to the trail in our surrounding communities. So attached, you'll find the three maps: one showing the entire proposed USBR route within the state, one showing the facilities under Stearns County jurisdiction, the Lake Wobegon Trail, and one showing the National Trail System Vision. MINDOT is requesting a formal support from roadway and trail authorities along this route, as they are, will be applying, my understanding is March 28, to the AASHTO for designation of this route. The Stearns County Park Commission reviewed this proposed route at their March 9 meeting, and recommends that the county board adopt a formal resolution supporting the development and implementation of the US Bike Route 20.
Anyone have questions for Ben? Commissioner Mergen?
Yeah, on the national one, I can't find anything in the legend that explains the differences between the solid lines, the dotted lines, the different colors.
It's on the bottom left.
I couldn't find it anyway.
On the, on the national corridor map?
Yes.
So on the bottom right-hand side, the dotted lines are the under, are the undeveloped corridor, and the solid lines on the map are the, are the designated or developed corridors that have been implemented already. So anything that's dotted, so the majority of the map is undeveloped. It's in really in the eastern part of the country, but the solid lines that you see there are the ones that have been developed.
What's the significance of the different colors? The red ones, the green ones, the yellow ones, the dotted ones?
I think that just, I can't answer that question. I'd have to go back to MINDOT, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I couldn't find a legend at all.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments for Ben? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Feel better. I feel better.
Oh, yeah. I do have one other thing.
Okay.
Chair, if that's okay. Just a public announcement. This Sunday, March 27, and the following Sunday, April 3, the Carlson family are providing maple syrup tours at Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park. We do ask that you pre-register for that event, and that can be found either on the Stearns County Parks Facebook page, or by going to the Parks website if people are interested. There, I believe, four, offering four one-hour tours, starting around noon, going through the afternoon. So if people are interested, check that out. It's very cool. It's a, highlights both modern maple, or sapping collection techniques, and the way it was originally done with buckets, and then they have a reverse osmosis machine along with the, the boiler and stuff. So if people are interested, check it out.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Property Services with their annual report. Morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. Jeff Johnson, Property Services Director. Today, we have a series of three reports on what's one-ditch matter that'll be presented to you by our leadership team from Property Services. So with that, I'll turn it over to our assessor, Jake Pity, and Assistant County Assessor, Randy Lar. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. This morning, we just want to introduce a 2022 property assessment update. It's H1 in your packets. There's not a page number because it's a PowerPoint that was uploaded. So we'll begin, we'll try and keep it brief. I know everybody's busy today, so. Just to start, you know, our work was completed, quintile inspections were done, market condition trends will run through, sales activity and ratios, as well as value changes and new construction. This is similar to what we've shown everyone in the past few years, so. We started work last April, continues through May of this year. Our quintile numbers are in the upper 90s, so, you know, similar to what we've always done. Evaluations were complete on February 25, which is a similar data last year, and value notices were mailed out on March 17. You, I'm assuming, for you that live in Stearns County, I assume you all do, that you've all gotten your, your value notices by now. The average increases were around 21% throughout the county, so it was a rather large, large increase this year. Here are our time trends that we looked at for residential properties. So if you look at the top row across, this is for the 21 sales studies for the 22 assessment. So this is what we use to set our values with. The western Stearns County off-water was at about 16, and on-water was 10. Eastern Stearns County was a little over 15, and a little bit over 20% on-water. Sartell has its own time trend. They were at 14 and 20, and then Eden Valley has their own as well, and they're also part of Meeker County. So they have their, they border both counties, or they overlap both counties, so they're at about 16%. So as you can see, those are substantially higher than the previous year, if you look across the row before that. So we saw some, some big increases, which were to be expected based on, on market trends, and, you know, a lot of people have, you know, there's been a lot of articles in the news, on the radio, on, online, social media. It's, it's no secret that house, house prices are sky-high right now, and we, we've been following that trend, so. The number of sales that we processed this year, we're up about, a little over 300 from the previous year, so we're at about 2,642. Last year, we were at 2,329, so those are up as well. This is probably hard to see, but it shows our ratios, the second column over, apartments, we're at 88%. Commercial is at 97.7, so that held pretty steady. Industrial, we only had three sales, but we were at about 80, 87 and a half. Resin seasonal, we were at about 78%, so that's kind of where, where we're coming from with our increases there. Off-water was at 78, and on-water was at about 75%. So we had a lot of work to do to get to where we needed to be based on department of revenue parameters. Rural vacant land, we're at 92. Ag and rural vacant, 34 and a half acres or more, we're at about 86, and about 86 as well on improved and unimproved ag land. So that, Randy's going to speak to the, to the ag a little bit, in a little bit here, but. So we're just talking increases here on these next few slides. So apartments, we saw typical increases of about 7% on apartments throughout the county. Some increased as much as 10%, but seven was pretty common. Based on that previous ratio you saw was at, at 88, so seven would get us right around 95%, which is where we like to be. Commercial-industrial, as you saw, we're sitting at 98% already, so we really didn't have to move commercial a whole lot. Industrial might have saw a little bit more than commercial, maybe a 1% increase, but everything stayed pretty flat, which it did the previous year as well. Industrial, we had a little expansion in manufacturing shops and warehousing. And if you, if you read up on any articles online or anything like that, you can see industrial's starting to be kind of a hot market again. Similar to, you know, similar to mini storage as well, which is, Randy might want to speak to that as well. He's kind of our in-house expert on that, so. Seasonal, residential, and recreational, we had a very similar amount of qualified sales. Last year, we had 1,299, and this year, we had 1,300. So only one sale different, which is kind of remarkable with that many sales, so. You know, and like I said before, we're at about 78%. So we saw value increases of 15 to 25% throughout the county, some, some reaching over 30%. Some, some lake shore properties went up substantially. It's not uncommon, you know, we, like I said, we were at about 21% on average, so. And then bear land, I think Randy wanted to talk about bear land and ag now?
Yeah.
Just a minute, Jake, Christian Mergen.
I just, you said the average was at in 2022, or is that for the future 2023 assessment?
2022 assessment, based on the 21 sales study.
Okay, because then I'm looking on, on page 190, where you've got the west and the east broken down?
Yep.
Okay, okay, 2022 is not on there. The latest you have is 2021, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, I'm good then.
Okay.
Because I was going to say, none of these numbers get that high.
Yeah, I'll just touch on real quickly on the agricultural, rural vacant land market. Pride, I'd make surprise when, when Jake goes over the new construction numbers. A lot of the homes that were built go on smaller tract acreage parcels, so obviously that's driven up in value, similar to what the residential is. So I would say the average increase on, on rural vacant land, smaller acreage, is going to be in that probably 10 to 20%. And then if you jump to the next slide, Jake, as far as agricultural properties, again, another strong market this year, but quite a bit stronger than last year, too. I think our average increase on tilbou last year was about $250 an acre. This year, it was about $500 an acre, so pretty significant change. Obviously, a big part of that's driven by the commodity prices, but also feeling that is, you know, just investment buyers. People are looking for, for land versus, you know, the stock market and bonds. So also, you'll see the multi-generational farm families are looking to expand for that next generation. They want to make sure they have, you know, a future there, too, so they're buying land as well. You know, even with the drought this year, rising input costs, it still seems to be a lot of optimism, optimism in the agricultural market right now. No signs of slowdown. The new sales that we've got, we're still, we're dropping back down again with our sales ratio, so. Doesn't seem to be slowing down at this point. You know, maybe when the commodity prices start to come back, we'll see some of that dip again, but, you know, it's still very strong right now. So, and it's just at the bottom of the slide, I noted what the average tilbou market value increases was. It was from 4721 last year to 5287 per acre this year. So you can see about 5 to 550 an acre is what our average changed there. And the green acre side, keep in mind, that's what they pay taxes on. That changed similarly, because in, in Stearns County, the tilbou value is the same on agricultural properties as, you know, on the market side versus the green acres, it's the same. So, so that also affects their taxable value as well. So I would say most people are probably going to see that 12, 12 to 16% change on the green acre side.
Randy, Commissioner Persky has a question.
What was the higher end on the, on the ag land, on the tilbou?
What was the?
What was the high end on that, you know?
What are we at? Well, see, it's a little bit complicated to answer that, because we do run a, a large field multiplier, but I would say, I think our highest is around 6,000 an acre, and then we tack on about 20% if it's a large field, because the, the market seems to have indicated people pay a premium for larger tracks, so. So, you know, if you add 20% on top of that, you know, you're, you're getting approached, approaching at 7,000 even for, per acre on the best ground, yep.
All right, so back to the market value increases. The EMV for the county, not including St. Cloud, grew about 15.4% between the 21 and 22 assessments, which is almost 11% higher than it did last year. So we've, we've seen quite a bit of increase. Just over 2.3 billion for the 22 assessment, which is higher than the 649 million increase for the previous year. New construction, as Randy mentioned earlier, for the 21 field year, I guess we could call it, where we were out in the field, was $183 million. The previous year was 156. So we're approaching those numbers back in 2018, 2017. We're up around those 180 million numbers. It made up approximately 8% of the EMV increase for the 22 assessment. Here's our new homes built. In 2020, we were down, this was our, our, probably our lowest year in quite a while. We had 240 new homes started, whereas in '21, we jumped back up to 303. So even with the cost of construction being up, I think with interest rates and just the demand for housing, it, it increased the number of, of houses that were started in 2021, so we're up around 303. And I just had a slide for questions, but I think before we get to that, Randy wanted to talk about, we, we put a sales layer, and I know I sent all the Commissioners out an email, as well as Mike and Randy and Jeff. Just talked about the increases, the sales layer map that, that we've, with the help of GIS. Dan Schmitz and his team did a great job for us there. We put that out there, and I, I think Randy wants to talk about that just a little bit, and, and what we've been able to do with, with the public in the phone calls.
Yeah, just briefly, Dan will cover it in his presentation, but it's just a, a layer that we put out on, on the website, where people can go out and look at what properties are selling for, and it's, it's for all property types, agricultural, commercial, residential, whole thing. Vacant land and, and improved, so just gives people an option to look at the map before they go, you know, call our office. They can look for themselves what properties are selling for, and we've got really good feedback on that. That's something that just was released here before the notices went out, so. So we seem to get a lot of mileage on that, you know, it shows that we're being transparent with what stuff's selling for, and I think it'll, it'll pay dividends, I think, so.
Thanks, Randy. So phone calls, we, we sent our value notices on Thursday. People started getting them in the mailboxes on Friday. Phone calls began Friday afternoon, and, and really ramped up a little bit on Monday morning. And honestly, they haven't been as bad as, as possibly we thought they might be. It's, it's a big increase, and we know there's a lot of sticker shock there, but we're hoping that we got enough information out for everybody, and just the fact that it's been in the news for so many months now, or years even, what the market's been doing. I think people understand that, that we need to follow that, those values, and that's kind of what we did, so. Yeah, that's all we had, so if you have any questions, yeah.
Commissioner Mergen?
You said last year's average increase was 21%. What do you project this year's to be, the ones you're sending out for 2023?
Okay, well, we've only seen, well, I guess we've seen a few months of sales now, and it looks like they're, they're up. We usually, during the winter months, it's, it's a little bit of a lower time for, for sale prices, and, and once, you know, April, May, spring hits, it starts to ramp back up. So it's kind of hard for us to tell right now where it's going to end up, but we are seeing increases again already. And he mentioned two, Randy mentioned two, about the, the land prices, two are going up as well.
I did, I did get a call from one, one person already with the 2023 projections coming out, and that, theirs went up 27 and a half percent. Does that sound reasonable? Along with that 21% from the year before, I'm sure it was there, too.
Well, the 21% is for this assessment, for the 22 assessment that we just mailed out.
Yeah, that's for P23, and I, just to get back to your question, there was a Star Tribune article that came, I think, on Friday. They mentioned that just in the first two months, they were already seeing about an 8% increase in, in the median sale price again. So it doesn't not seem to be slowing down. It's just that there's a real lack of supply out there right now, and I think that's part of the reason the new construction numbers are up. People, they have to go somewhere, so they're building even with construction costs, you know, being fairly high, too, so.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm not sure if it's one of you, or if it's Jeff, or Randy, any ability to speak to where the legislature is at with regard to some of the, the exemptions, what they're looking at to give some relief. Obviously, you know, this is a net, it's a, it's a gain in terms of an asset, but this, it's very costly for people, and the state has a lot of money right now. So some relief would be helpful, and I know that there's been work on it, so could, is this the appropriate time to address that?
I think so. I mean, Jeff has just testified on some of those, so he'd probably be our, yeah.
That's what I figured. I figured for the public, it's a good thing to hear.
We'll, we'll go ahead and sit on that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I have the same question. Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioners Jeff Johnson, Property Services Director. I've been following quite a bit of the legislation that's been introduced this session regarding property taxes, and I can assure you that the legislature is well aware of some of the increases that are being placed, not just in Stearns County, but statewide. Recently, there's been bills introduced to increase the property tax refund. In the Senate, there was a bill, 3185, by Senator Klein, that would increase the threshold, increase the maximum refund amount. Also, and I think more importantly, there's been a bill recently introduced in the House side by Representative Watt, that would lower the circuit breaker threshold, and that's what we refer to as the special property tax refund. Very critical program for Minnesota property homeowners. The threshold was that your taxes had to increase by more than 12%, and that increase had to be greater than $100, and the maximum refund that a property owner could receive based on a change in tax would be $1,000. However, I think they've been listening to a few folks. This bill does reduce the percentage from 12% down to 10% increase from the preceding year, and it also increases that threshold from $1,000 to $2,000. So that's very encouraging. So if that passes, that'll be a big plus in the Minnesota property tax refund program. And lastly, I just want to mention, there is a program called the Homestead Market Value Exclusion Program. Both on the Senate and the House side, there's bills that have been introduced to increase the portion of homestead market value eligible for the exclusion. The base was set at $76,000 for many years, and they're looking at increasing that, that floor up to about $80,300, which would give on a home valued at $80,300, a deferral of $32,100, or excuse me, exclusion of $32,120 rather than $30,400 from taxation. So that's a good sign. And it also increases the ceiling from $413,800 to $437,100. So these are some bills that have been introduced. Some of them have had hearings, have been laid over, and hopefully they'll find their way into the omnibus tax bill. So I hope that answers the Board's question. Thank you. Thank you.
It does, and particularly about the circuit breaker, as you said, I mean, that's kind of a big challenge for a while. Are any of these time limited or would they be permanent law?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, it'd be my understanding that they'll take on some permanency. I don't, I, I believe they'd be effective for 2023 payable, which would be next year's tax.
So is anybody talking about 2022 at all?
2022 payable based on this year? I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Just, just thought I'd check on that. And thank you, thank you so much for all your work on this. And if there's something any of us can be doing, I mean, this broadly is a pretty big issue and if there are people we can be following up with, please let us know.
Just a couple of comments. So just remember for people, the property tax refund, a lot of what Jeff talked about, that's something you have to file for separately, right?
Right.
So, and then the other one, he was talking about the homestead market value exclusion, that'll be part of the calculation that would provide some relief, too. And just because the market values are going up 20%, that doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up that amount, right? There's certainly going to be a shift to more residential, they'll carry a bigger part of the load, but, you know, you shouldn't expect that your tax will go up that much.
So, but it would be fair to say that some of what's out there, if somebody has seen a significant increase due to valuation, should they pass into law any of these, it might give some relief?
Yeah, we've been, both Jeff and myself, in Stearns County, we've done a number of scenarios, different options to help with this problem and they are listening, so hopefully something can be done, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You can find my information on packet page 202. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you with an update of our... I'll continue. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you with an update on how we're meeting our obligation to provide exceptional public service. Briefly, I would like to describe our department overview. We are responsible for the review, recordation, and preservation of over 400 different types of documents. There are four actionable initiatives that guide our work. We comply with federal and state laws. We improve on operational processes and practices. We explore the use of available technologies and we invest in our team members and community by maintaining strong connections. During the past year, our department was involved in several service activities. We promoted the use of electronic submissions to record abstract real estate documents and over the past year, we are over 10% growth in e-recording. We discuss and plan to accept Torrance title registrations along with other electronic filings. We publicize the convenience of using our two land record research portals and the ability to pay by credit and debit card. We also plan to expand credit card option to escrow accounts in 2022. We apprise our users on the availability of Torrance certificates through the Beacon Portal in addition to adding them to the LandShark system this year. Currently, policies are being evaluated and procedures are developed to expand the use of credit cards for in-person recording. We also explored the use of the CPT method of registering property and was authorized to implement last month. After speaking with David Myers, he's our examiner of titles, he informed us that we have eight to 10 registrations in progress. We improved data management and processing procedures to enhance the integration of paper and electronic documents within our recording system. This has allowed us to expand telecommuting. We're also testing digital stamping software and will soon apply that to our recording process. Lastly, we have provided land notification, that is a free subscription to help property owners monitor properties and prevent real estate fraud. And we are approximately 300 property owners are using this service today. On packet page 210, this chart illustrates the volume of all documents processed during the past 11 years. We had almost an 8% increase from 2020 to 2021 and 34% increase from 2019 to 2021. I did run some statistics last week and we're averaging about 3,100 documents per month. So we're falling in between the year 2020 and 2021. Then on packet page 211, this bar graph shows the increase in volume of e-recordings. During the years 2011 and 2018, we only e-recorded non-transfer type documents. In July of 2019, we recorded, we were accepting all document types and we added three trusted submitters. In the years 2020 and 2021, due to COVID, there was a substantial increase of all e-recordings across the state of Minnesota, plus we publicized the convenience of e-recording with our business On packet page 212, this chart shows the county and state revenues that are based on the number of documents recorded and the department's service fees. We're about 9.6% increase over last year. I ran some statistics last week and our department's service fees are over $40,000 and we're at $234,000 for county revenue and a little over $3,000 for state revenue. Minnesota imposes a law that requires documents to be completed within five business days for e-recording and 10 business days for paper recordings. 90% is the annual compliance standard. We were at 85.98% compliant last year. Compliance was not achieved due to the high volume of recording activity and staff shortage due to a retirement and resignation. We were down two people between April and August. And then, as you can see, we're compliant six months out of the year last year, though they are the bolded numbers under 2021. We anticipate compliance will be achieved in 2022. We are currently at 99.48%. We are fully staffed since September and we had one recent resignation last week. We're better positioned to address the workloads because of new technologies and improved processes and will approve overtime as needed along with small operational changes. And then another compliance status update will be offered during the 2023 budget process. And before I conclude, conclude this report, I'd like to mention that I maintain strong connections with the recording community by being the second vice president to the Minnesota County Recorders Association, also known as MACRA. I'm the MACRA representative to the Minnesota Association of County Officers. I'm on the MACRA Legislative Committee and the MACRA Torrance Title Committee. And I'd like to thank Jeff Johnson here and the county board for your guidance, leadership, and support. And at this time, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to share?
First of all, thanks, Rita, for all the work your department does. That's, that's a lot of documentation that has to get recorded.
Yes.
And are you seeing, I'm assuming most of your closing companies now are using the e-docs and attorneys?
Yes. Some of the local ones, it's harder for them to get them to do it, but I think if they, they did it, they'll realize that if there is a problem, they'll get the, their documents back the same day versus by mail. You know, you have the five to 10 days, you know, the mail transit. So trying to get them on board to use e-recording, it's a lot more efficient and faster.
Okay. Anyone else have a question? Commissioner Clark?
Actually, I just wanted to basically say the same thing. It's been pretty outstanding and it's probably in addition to all the work you all have done. This is another way that many people have learned to do something different during the last two years.
Correct.
E-document signing, among others, has become much more prevalent and it would seem, hopefully that will be better, better meeting people's needs and be more efficient from a staff standpoint. So thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes, Rita, yes, thanks for all that, that work. Of course, there are some old horses around that still operate under the old system, some that might be sitting on the dais, but, you know, people want something more tangible and, you know, if it's a piece of paper, they can see it. If it's an e-document, where is it? And I guess the, the concern many people have is the security of that. So what can you say about the security of e-documents as far as them being permanent?
Correct. E-recording is where it is in paper form and so they can have it notarized at the title company or law firm and then they submit it through the system, which has been vetted by the state with our trusted submitters and they submit it electronically to us instead of by paper. So there is a tangible document, except the submitter is actually scanning that document into our recording system and then we review it electronically. And then we record it and then the trusted submitters send us the money for the recording and then that alleviates us having problems with non-payment checks and stuff. The trusted submitters take care of that. They ensure the counties receive the recording fees or the state tax or mortgage registration tax.
So my question then would be cybersecurity, is that how do we know that the documents that we have recorded are, are being protected? Because we hear about hackers, we hear about, you know, a foreign threat perhaps to infiltrate our documents. How do we know that, that, that security exists?
With our IS department, we, they do a backup of our system, I believe nightly and they have a second spot, I believe, that our images are stored. So if there was something taken, we should be able to be operational the following day.
So, excuse me.
I'm guessing, I'm relying on IS.
We have our own backup.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
I feel a little bit better.
Yes.
And I think some of the other horses might, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, the, the challenge for a department like this is their customer base, if you want to think of it that way, is really two-tiered. One is the property professionals that work with this department multiple times a year and, on the other hand, certain individuals that might only interact with this department very occasionally. And so to deliver this service both electronically and let's call it manually, is, it isn't a challenger on top of it now, but we have to keep that in mind. There are certain efficiencies because of that that the department will never quite achieve, but they're doing a pretty good job. The complaints I get about, about this are substantially less and over the years, what I've learned is no news is good news.
Anyone else? If not, otherwise, thank you very much, Rita.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate the work you guys do.
Thank you, Miss Commissioners.
Next up, we have Property Services again.
Good morning, Commissioners Chad Martini, Land Services Manager. Appreciate the time this morning to talk a little bit about who we are in land services and some of the things we do. Oh, okay. So we are a group of 11 staff members and we support the public and county departments in three areas, GIS survey and of course, our drainage program. Starting with our GIS staff, in 2021, Mike Poehler served as our GIS manager. Mike has recently left us to take a leadership role in human services and although certainly sorry to see Mike go, we're very fortunate to have Dan Schmitz, our GIS analyst, who's here today? Dan, raise your hand. And Dan is filling in that role until we're able to complete the recruitment process. And then we have Renee Rose now and Chris Jensen rounding out the team as our GIS specialists. Survey staff is a mix of licensed professional and technical staff and we have County Surveyor Ryan Henon, who's going to speak in a minute about his group, Deputy County Surveyor Jason Blummel. You might recognize the name Dean Shremmel, our survey construction coordinator. Dean is a huge part of our drainage program, working with property owners and overseeing construction projects. And Craig Welly supports that as well as the public land survey system. Michelle Thompson checks every plat that comes through Stearns County. So Michelle sees just about every piece of land development that rolls through Stearns County. And Andrew Mueller is kind of a jack of all trades and he can fill in, in any of those spots for us. Talking about GIS staff, GIS is purely a support function in the county. It's a consultative process that Dan and his group do and because of that, they understand success can only be defined by their customer. If the customer's happy, they're successful. If not, there's work yet to be done. And, and what, what the approach Dan and his team do is they're, they're connecting with that line of business expert in a department and, and they're sharing their technical knowledge and the blend of those two things is a deliverable product for the department. And I want to highlight, there's never an end product here. There's only a continually evolving application or product and that's based on department staff, those experts feeding and requesting changes in information to Dan and the GIS team. It's when that knowledge for the line of staff expert, as they ramp up and start to understand what the technical possibilities are, that's when the script flips and they start to dictate to the GIS staff what their needs are and Dan and his team can make those changes. And that's when the power of those applications exponentially increases and that's when we really start to see savings of time and money. Some GIS highlights from 2021. 62 applications, all created in-house with in-house staff and using existing resources. 28 online surveys customized for delayed data collection needs of the departments. Over 1,400 mobile park downloads. If you're in Quarry Park and you want to know where the landmarks you're interested are relative to your position, you can download that to your mobile device. Because the mission for GIS is outreach and communication, web statistics are really a great way to kind of measure what we're doing. Almost 230,000 public hits on our land use GS application. That's your appraisers, your title companies, your realtors, property owners, internal staff. Over 42,000 survey 123 submissions. That's that survey software that Dan sets up, a lot of those being part of our COVID response, part of the CARES Act information gathering. That's all running through GIS. Over 8,000 survey business partner site hits, almost a 50% increase over 2020. I highlight that because that's our response to the private survey community saying, we need to work 24/7. We don't stop working at 4:30 county. And so by making them self- And so by making them self-service, that creates time for staff. And that's how we support your drainage program without adding additional staff. We find efficiencies elsewhere to make it work for us. So if the mission is communication and outreach, we feel pretty good about over 400,000 touches to those GIS web applications in 2021. With that, I want to turn it over and introduce Ryan Henon, County Surveyor, to you and let him talk specifically about his program.
Chad, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
So the, the business partner one where you had the 8,000, is that, is that a fee for them to go onto that one?
No, that is a login specific application for specific business partners.
Okay.
But it is free to them. Our, the fee study analysis we work on with Auditor and Jeff Johnson, we're money ahead, you know, in terms of, because we track that time in surveys, so we kind of understand what we're saving and where that time's going.
I know I clicked in there and I seen that and I thought, I wonder if you got to pay a fee to actually get through there, but.
Not on that one.
Okay, thanks.
Ryan, you want to take it over?
Sure. So what do we get for clicking through this? Yeah, but. Okay. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. As Chad said, I am the County Surveyor. I'm also manager in the Land Services Department. I guess first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity just to be able to discuss, you know, what we do as a department, you know, and what we bring to Stearns County and then some of the tasks we've completed in 2021 and some of the importance of those tasks that we completed. First and foremost, the survey department is a service-driven department, much like a lot of the other departments in Stearns County. We strive on building relationships, building partnerships and helping create an environment where we can help people with their land development needs. You know, a lot of the partners we are trying to grow, townships and cities, we're trying to bring them into the fold, helping them understand where they fit in the land development process a little bit. Sometimes it gets lost in translation on where some of their direction should be. And we try to help, at least as best we can, help them facilitate some of their development needs too. The list we have up here, this kind of lists some of the customers we have, internal customers as well as external land development customers. You know, some, one of our bigger ones is probably the Recorder's Office. You know, we work hand in hand and with plats and the documents that go along with plating. We help review legal descriptions. We help map some of those legal descriptions that are included in some of the Torrens documents and some of the early registration documents to help map those for Rita and her group. Another new relationship we've recently kind of tapped into is the county right-of-way plating. This was something that was primarily done through our highway, our highway department. We kind of helped partner with them to do the drafting. We're uniquely qualified to do a lot of this drafting with the land survey background. So we work with them to lay out the existing right-of-way, any existing easements that are there. And then we lay that out, they overlay their road construction plans and then we help them develop plans for conveyances and getting new easements. Then we finalize these right-of-way plats typically just before the projects begin. You know, some of the other partners that we have internally are like parks. We work with them with the original rail and some of the, the right-of-way that they have. And then we work with, also with the Attorney's Office going through documents for them to making sure if there's any interest, land interest that Stearns County is involved with, that that is represented. If we can move on to the next slide, that'd be great. Some of the plating statistics that we have from this 2021 year are shown here in the pie chart. We've seen 81 plats last year. That's pretty consistent. We've been seeing roughly between 70 and 100 plats throughout the years that I've been here. The fees that we've collected are on the left in that little bar graph. But all of the subdivisions, the common interest communities, registered land surveys, those things, those are all subject to approval by County Surveyor and our staff. And they're all independently evaluated to make sure they are in compliance with the different Minnesota statutes that apply to each of those documents. This is kind of just a breakdown very quickly of where the plating took place last year in Stearns County. To no surprise, city is Saint Cloud at the top, pretty consistently in that 15 to 20 range. Some of the other ancillary cities, you know, Sartell and St. Joe, you'll see a handful of plats come in from those cities as well. Townships, bit of a mixed bag. St. Wendell last year didn't have five, but a lot of times it's just, you know, single lot plats that come in and that's just kind of a breakdown of what we've seen in plating last year. Next. You know, another really big part of the survey department is the public land survey system and it's the maintenance and perpetuation of that system. Just a quick Cliff's Notes version of what the PLSS is. It's just a grid that is essentially laid out over the majority of the country, broken down into townships and then broken down even further into sections. This process was completed, you know, in the mid 1850s here in Minnesota, started in 1850s, completed around the early 1900s. And the maintenance of this system was relied upon the states at first and then the states moved that on to the counties. So it is our responsibility to maintain these corners. And it's vitally important that they are maintained. All land distribution, conveyances, easements, property, everything is tied to these corners. All of our parcel mapping is tied to these corners. So it's critically important that we maintain the corners. And to give you an idea of what we're looking at internally, we've got 37 townships. We have 1,300 sections, give or take. And that calculates out to about 5,300 section corners that we're responsible for maintaining. At a given year, we'll maintain between 80 and 150 of those corners. When I say maintain, we'll go and visit each one of these corners, particularly before construction. We'll remove the corner, we'll make sure it, it fits our existing files in our existing location. We'll remove it, construction will be completed, we'll come back and we'll put it back at the surface so everyone has the opportunity to continue to use that. Per statutory requirement, anytime we visit one of these monuments, we need to complete a certificate of location. All that is essentially is just a quick snapshot of where that corner is, some ties to it and some general information. And then on the back, it's just a series of evidentiary notes saying who all touched this corner throughout the history of the corner, including our very last entry, that would be whatever we've done to it in the, you know, in the prior year. So that's just kind of a quick breakdown of what we do.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, so when you go to these corners and you assess them, do you find discrepancies of what, where they are and where they should be? I mean, you know, things were pretty crude when we first put the section markers in opposed to where we are today with that, so.
Yeah.
What kind of differences might you be seeing?
It's a great question. Surveying is really a, it's a combination of an art and a science. Scientifically, yeah, we can mathematically get to a location and we can be, you know, as accurate, you know, within sub-centimeters. But that doesn't mean that's where the location was 140 years ago. That location could vary, you know, several feet, you know, 20, 30, 40 feet. It's, it's not unheard of. So a lot of times what ends up happening, if these corners get lost, you have to use all the other evidence that's around to try and replace that. And a lot of times it ends up being, you know, just general sightlines, you know, field lines, tree lines, just different occupation to help replace it. A lot of times it's roads, you know, a lot of times it's intersections of roads because that's, was the early boundaries. They would just overlay these roads over the top of the section corners. So it's, to answer your question, you'll find, you can find some pretty significant discrepancies, but in my experience, they were amazingly accurate in the time for how crude some of the instrumentation was.
Then do you, do you make the adjustment or do you leave, leave them where they are?
You know, the, the rule of thumb is follow.
Does that depend who's in the truck?
Yeah, right. And it's, and it, the rule of thumb is you follow in the footsteps of the original surveyor. So you have to go back to the way, the method that they placed that monument. And if you can figure out the intent and you can figure out roughly where that location was, hopefully that brings you to your final result. But if you can't, there's times it's lost and then you end up having to just put it in mathematically and that is what it is, or just through occupation. Throughout history, occupation is probably one of the main sources of setting these corners back. Because over 140 years, it was a wood stake, you know, it was a wood stake and a mound and a few rocks. So that thing is, those are easily lost. So, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, may I just run into the last slide too, because part of survey, we do help out our District Administrator Chad Martini quite a bit with drainage. We have 18 legal drainage systems, 80 miles of ditches and over, you know, 27,000 benefited acres that apply to that, those ditches. The main part that my staff deals with though, is the maintenance and inspection part of it. Maintenance is being if things fall into the ditches, we help clear it out or through the direction of Chad will, you know, hire people to pick, you know, to either clean out particular areas of the ditches or, or sometimes we do it ourselves. If there's fallen limbs and things like that, we'll clean it up, beavers, beaver dam, stuff like that. And we're also responsible for the inspection portion of these ditches per statute. Every five years, these ditches need to be inspected. So we are part of that process as well. I guess with that, that's all I had. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Ryan?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioners. That is a nice segue into our next agenda topic, if you're ready for it, if you'd like me to begin. Okay.
Do we have to accept the report first or?
Just informational.
All right, thanks.
So we have some legal business to take care of on County Ditch 28 today involving a property owner petition of redetermination and damages. Just briefly, the things I need to go over today with you per guidance from our legal counsel. So we have received a property owner petition for redetermination of benefits and damages. I'll go through a little bit of the validation process, not only for your benefit, but for the viewing public. As you can imagine, there's a lot of interest in this topic. We'll talk a little bit about how Minnesota law really dictates to you as a drainage authority how to move forward on this. And then we do have a staff recommendation for you to consider at the end. So looking at the petition, this was received by the Auditor's Office dated December 31st, 2021. We received it January 7th. Contents of that petition involved a cover letter from an attorney, so the petitioners are legally represented. And then the petition has a summary spreadsheet, shows legal description, parcel ID, owner name, and then of course, the amount of acreage associated with that owner, which is a key piece. And then as well as the signature sheets that each property owner specifically signed attesting that they're in the affirmative with regards to moving forward with the redetermination. Again, working with legal counsel, there's really four elements that we look at when we're validating a petition for its legality. Is the property associated with the signature in the ditch system? Is the acreage associated with the signature accurate? Do signatures match what the county shows as ownership? So is the person signing for something they actually own? And then lastly, do signatures equal either 26% of the property acres within the system or do signatures equal at least 26% of the property owners in the system? So there's two thresholds there that are written into state law that we have to follow. So looking at some of these numbers, the current system has a little over 3,000 acres, 202 property owners. Validation requires one of the following conditions to be true. Either you have signatures representing 26% of the acreage, which in this case would be 798.52 acres, or you have 26% of the property owners, which would, you would need 53 for a valid petition. So what staff did, and again, this goes back to GIS working on behalf of the auditor to do this, verified a little over 1,000 acres of affirmative petition signatures. Staff in their review process did find two affirmative signature sheets that weren't represented in the submitted summary. So we actually ended up with, we found two additional properties. So we end up with a final total of 1,086.28 acres of affirmative property owner signatures, which means the 26% threshold for acreage is met and is valid. And so the final result, petition is legally validated. This has also been looked at by the attorneys at Rinkie Noonan. So our path forward is really dictated by Minnesota Law 103E 351. And that kind of dictates what we do when we get a petition. And there's only two paths forward. You as a drainage authority can order a redetermination at any time or what's happened here, we get a petition from property owners in, in the form of that petition. So here's the statute and it's really nice that we have experienced lawyers who do nothing but drainage to help us with this because it gets a little murky as we get into this. It's broken into two parts. Section A deals with what you as a drainage authority have the power to do and Section B, which kind of guides us on if we get a property owner petition, what do we do? So on the next slide, I'm kind of trying to focus on the important elements. So in Section A, if the drainage authority determines that benefits and damages of record don't reflect reasonable present day land values, you may, you have a choice, you may move forward with a redetermination. That's your choice as a drainage authority. And when we look at the next slide, we look at Part B, which talks about now we have a petition. So now what happens? So if you get a valid petition, what the law says is the drainage authority must make a determination on that petition. And how you make that determination is back in Section A. So we jump back up to the top and kind of the legal explanation or result of what that means in case law is because of how that Part B is written, the only consideration in Part A that you have to focus on is whether or not land values in 2022 reasonably reflect the drainage proceeding values from 1906. It would be difficult, as I'm told by the attorneys at Rinkie Noonan, to conclude that land values in 2022 reasonably reflect those in 1906. I'm stating the obvious, but this is all important, especially for property owners as we get calls, you know, why does this have to move forward? Why is there not a choice? And that's kind of what I'm trying to explain. So it's because of those things that the drainage authority in practicality has no discretion in making a determination on a property owner petition other than is it valid or is it not valid? I'm sure there's questions, but I will get to our staff recommendation first. So this is something for you to consider today, which would be to accept the petition by property owners benefited by County Ditch 28, requesting a redetermination of benefits and damages of the County Ditch 28 drainage system and then authorize staff to seek proposals from ditch viewers to initiate the redetermination proceeding as well as appointment of viewers, which we would have to come back to a future board meeting to have you consider the selection. So with that, that is my best attempt to kind of illustrate the legal aspects of what have happened here. Questions from the drainage authority, suggestions, guidance for staff?
Any question? First of all, I'd say that they, obviously they've met the 26%, so.
Correct, the petition is valid.
Kind of to the must, huh?
In practicality, regardless of how the law is written, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Persky, did you have a comment?
Well, I just, then this could be relatively costly. And so people that were thinking that they were maybe going to have an adjustment or have, have a benefit from the redetermination would be looking a way of getting around charges. There's actually going to be a considerable charge in redetermination. Is that not correct?
The best I can talk about, just generally in cost, when I'm talking with property owners and, you know, Randy is the auditor, you know, was concerned about this too, you know, what is the impact to property owners? Because this essentially creates tax for them. What's happening in other counties, it's not uncommon for. them. What's happening in other counties, it's not uncommon for redetermination of benefits processed to cost in excess of $100,000. Now, I don't want people to panic about that, because County Ditch 28 is a lot different than a county ditch in Blue Earth County, where those egg prices that Randy talked about earlier are probably a little bit different than they are in Stearns County. Because as part of the redetermination process, state law says, trying to think how to make this as clear as possible, when you redetermine a ditch, not only are you changing the boundary of property owners that participate in that ditch, you also have to pay damages for the taking of a 16 and a half foot permanent vegetation bu- buffer on the other side of the ditch, which gets into the whole recent buffer loss stuff, but I won't take you down that rabbit hole. And so property owners will get a bill for the cost of redetermination, but they also may get a check from the ditch system, because they may own land where the channel actually goes through. And it's those damages that are really an X factor, and how much does this ditch cost? Jeff Johnson could tell you if, if it's primarily, it's swamp, it's, it's marginal hayland, maybe depending on, is it a drought like last year, is it wet? So the value that you are essentially appraising that buffer land at could fluctuate wildly. And so that's why it is difficult to put a cost on. We have 202 property owners, unique property owners, I think there's about 231 total. Through redetermination, that will most certainly increase probably dramatically. And so if you are a property owner that's currently paying, there could be an advantage for you, because how you're using land today is going to be a lot different than how you did in 1906. You know, so the valuation, the appraisal, the cost share can be different, but...
So Chad, the, um, the redetermination cost is spread over the entire new area, right?
An excellent point. Thank you, Randy. It's the final new boundary of property owners that gets assessed for the cost.
Commissioner Clark, you had a comment?
Yeah, it was, I was just thinking as you were talking, I wish we had the map up, actually, because it's always such an interesting...
Oh!
This particular one, I think it just looks so different than most people think when they hear the word ditch. But what I was also thinking about was the number of current people for whom it's less than $5. You know, I mean, so it's going to be interesting to see what impact the cost and the benefit may be for...
I mean, generally speaking, when you look at any ditch, you have a channel, and if you think of concentric circles, if you're on the water, you're probably going to pay differently than somebody that's in the next tier. You know, in theory, the further you go away, the less your benefit probably is, and so the smaller your amounts would be. You know, some of the issues with the current determination are, there are several property owners whose land use has changed dramatically from 1906 to today, that clearly in 1906 must have been huge beneficiaries, where now, maybe they're not, but they're carrying the load for a lot of people. But I will make the point, and I've learned this the hard way over the years, if it's $5 or $1,000, that's still tax money that's coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. And, you know, that's not something, we understand as staff when we're inspecting and we're planning projects, that the end result is somebody's going to get taxed for this. And that's where, you know, at Randy and Jeff's guidance, you know, we do try to take a very common sense approach that's very much community-driven, knowing that it's drainage and we'll never have a happy consensus. And that's just the reality.
Commissioner Mergen?
This assessment, assessment is generally two tier, right? One being what percent or how much you're being benefited, and then secondly, by your acreage? Is that somewhere close?
So, and I'm not a ditch viewer, so, but I've, you know, obviously been around them enough to have a conceptual idea of where you're going. So ditch viewers originally in 1906 would look at 40 acre tracts only. This is where Dan could probably explain this better, because Dan actually does the calculations through GIS for us. So you have a 40 acre tract, and it's in or it's out. The whole 40 is in, or the whole 40 is out, and the ditch viewer is stomping around in 1906, making that determination. If it's in, that doesn't mean all 40 are benefited. There might be a pit in the lowland that's 10 acres in that 40. And so you have a benefit of 10 acres on that 40. And then the calculation, what ditch viewing really is, is appraising. So they're trying to assign an economic value to, well, if you can drain that 10 acres, what's, what's, what's that mean to you? What's the price? You know, what does that put in your pocket? Could be hayland, could be tilled land. So that's kind of the process. And that's the most common question from property owners is, my neighbor owns 10 acres, I own 10 acres, I paid $30 and he paid 15. Why? We own the same property. Well, when you dig into the crusty old records, you see that, oh, well, the neighbor has three benefited acres, you have 13. That's how it, but property owners can't see that when they walk their land. So it's very hard, you know, for them to understand how that works and what that process is.
Just a couple more. How is the city of Albany going to fit in here and assessments there?
Difficult to say. I would expect, just from the work we've done in the last two years, preparing for the possibility of a redetermination, that I would expect portions, if not all of Albany, to have some involvement in a redetermination. To what extent, it's hard to say. Two Rivers River runs from south of Albany, through Albany, through the Gulf Course, and then magically at some section line turns into a drainage ditch. So now we have an administrative ditch and a DNR public waters river. All Albany stormwaters engineered, all their pipes under the ground go into the river. All the river flows into the ditch. And so, you know, it's important to note that ditch viewers by law work independent of you as the drainage authority and me as staff. So it is difficult to predict, although, you know, we talk and we kind of are projecting some things, but we really don't know. And so that's, that's all the calls. Am I going to be affected? Maybe, maybe not.
So how are they going to be charged? You might not be able to answer this yet. As a city lot in Albany?
Yeah.
Are they going to have that on their county tax bills saying this, or is it somehow through the city, or?
Two methods. So currently, there are a number of Albany city parcels that are part of the ditch system. And so they get an individual special assessment on their individual property tax statement, just like everybody else. But theoretically, and this came up with Sartell in County Ditch 50 a number of years ago, if an entire municipality is part of a ditch system, you could also assess the city for that benefit in their boundary. And then the city could choose how they want to met that out to their property owners. And so it, it kind of remains to be seen. Albany's clearly going to be a partner, as well as holding forward, you know, and any other, you know, townships and municipalities that might get, you know, caught up into this. When we mailed our notification letter, we know we overmailed. We aired on the side of transparency, because we would rather risk getting people a little anxious today and have them not be affected down the road, than miss that person that will be affected and never heard about it until the ball was rolling.
Yeah. So landowners just north of farming that area, possibly could be included in this? Have they been notified yet, or?
Yeah.
Is that going to be a surprise to them?
I'm looking at my board agenda packet. You know, I work with mapping all day, Commissioner Clark, you think I would have brought a map? But there is one in the board packet, and I will highlight that for anybody viewing.
Chad, isn't this also kind of the Two Rivers watershed? At one time, that all was going south of Albany. It basically, it's kind of re- re- re-showing what was there at one time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm holding up a map that nobody can see, but that was, we used the natural watershed that Mother Nature carved out. So if it rains, that's what that blob is. And yeah, it gets into farming. I mean, I talked to somebody not in farming township, really close yesterday. And, you know, my message to him was, I wouldn't get too excited. I mean, I'm not the ditch viewer. I can't make promises. Looking at your individual situation, that brings up a lot of natural questions of, if you get that far out, you know, where are you ending? Are you going to Meker County? You know, where do you cut it off? And it's what the viewers do. They kind of use a 24-hour mental check of, how far can water go in 24 hours? You know, that's what they're telling us in terms of how they look at this today. You know, you get beyond that, you know, maybe you're not benefited, maybe you're benefited a little bit. But yeah, I know there's fringe areas that are not going to be affected, but we don't know.
Yeah. I think just for an example, one I remember is County Ditch 26, which is Getchel's Creek. There's actually one parcel that was left out by the viewers, because it's like, there's, it doesn't drain there. Everybody else around it drains there, but this one parcel. So, I mean, weird things can happen once the viewers are out there and they do their footwork.
As a tidbit, and I know staff and I know Commissioner Mergen, you have a question. Ryan and his staff handled a lot of the phone calls, but me personally, I had more calls about Getchel Creeks than I did County Ditch 28, for some reason. Because we are mailing, we're hitting some of those people, and they're like, hey, I'm already in a ditch. You know, I don't want to be in two. You know, and again, it's the same message of, let's wait and see. And I'm not seeing any reason to get excited today. And, you know, we'll cross that bridge and we'll get to it.
So at this point, you need us to make...
The motion, if, you know, for your consideration is on the board.
And we pretty much don't have a choice, correct?
You always have a choice, but what...
This would be a risky choice.
Not any good ones.
What I've been advised by legal counsel is that you would be at risk of legal liability if we didn't do anything today.
Answers my question.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Mergen. Do we have a second?
A second then.
Second by Commissioner Lenzbier. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm a recovering viewer, but it's just like the title issue we talked about earlier. As time has gone on, the process has gotten more sophisticated. If you look at the original, you know, 1900, 1906, 1910 maps of some of the ditches, you will see the original assessments just assess the properties right next to the ditch. Well, what happened since then is we realized, and this sounds like a smart aleck remark, but we read, we adjusted those estimates based on the knowledge that water runs downhill. And stuff farther back, if it's uphill from the ditch, benefits as well. So what's happened over time is on those old ditches, more properties are included in the assessments than originally was done. Also, what we're seeing specifically in Sartell, in Stearns County here, and a little bit in Albany eventually, maybe a little bit already, is that as areas urbanize, those old ditches become the storm sewer systems. If you go, you really want to see an extensive system of this, Anoka County has bludles of those old ditches that have become the stormwater systems of all those small cities as they grew and developed. In addition, it's, Anoka County has sandy soils. So you have a significant underground migration of water. But the horse is dead on this, so...
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll be back with a viewer recommendation soon.
We look forward to it. Okay, we're, we're due, we're overdue for a break, so I think we'll take one so we can get the last item set up and ready to go. So we'll take a five-minute break. Yeah. Back to order as soon as we're up and running. There we go. Hey, Randy, I guess you're up.
Okay, I'm Randy Schifels.
Could you start this by explaining the timeline? When we have to have this all figured out and what we're going to be going through today?
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
So I'm Randy Schifels, the Stearns County Auditor Treasurer, and with me today is Dave Walsh and Roxanne Garrids. And we'll all be talking about it. So if you want to go to the next slide. Now, the timeline, Lee, is the county needs to be done by the end of April. We have two meetings in April. April 12th is a public hearing, and that's the opportunity to pass a plan. That will be your first opportunity to do that. And if that doesn't work, you can continue that public hearing to the second one in April. The city of St. Cloud is still finishing their redistricting, so that meeting will happen at the end of March. And once they've finished, then we'll be able to go from there. So we do have to wait for them. So today, what we're doing is looking at plans, hopefully narrowing the field down to less plans. I believe there's nine plans that we've presented today, so. Is that what you're looking for, Lee? That's what you're looking for? Is that timeline there?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, so the requirements quickly is, of course, as many districts as commissioners, we're looking at five districts. The districts all have to be bounded by precinct lines, so we can't make any new lines up. We have to take the existing lines. And as always, we try not to split up jurisdictions such as cities and townships. St. Cloud, we will have to do that, and that's probably appropriate. Besides just not having voter confusion, if you do split up a city such as Wade Park, there's an opportunity for that city to have two commissioners. Now, St. Cloud has two commissioners, but it is the largest jurisdiction, so that makes sense, so. The plans need to have contiguous territories, so they all need to connect. There can be no separations, regular and compact. So compact generally is a circle or a square, so as much compact as you can get. The 10% rule is all the districts need to be within 10% of the average. And then the plans filed by the auditor, which we'll do in April, so go ahead. So this is the current map where we are with the current populations. And as you can see, District 2 is the one that's off by the most. And that's where really a lot of the changes start because District 2 will lose Wade Park. There's no way for District 2 to keep Wade Park, and then the question is who gets Wade Park? So, and then everything else changes from there, so. And obviously, District 5 also needs to move to the east also, gain a little more territory. This is a map of the non-white population coming from the census blocks. Let's thank Dan from GIS for doing this. So we do look at that and what we're affecting on that population, and all plans meet the rules on that also, so. And I'll turn it over to Dave, and he'll start going through the plans one by one, so. And certainly, if there's questions and comments, you know, we can view it more as a work session, if that's okay with the board chairs.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Walsh, selections director. Before I start, I just want to also mention in the previous presentation from Chad Martin's group when he talked about GIS, these maps are courtesy of that. So thanks to Jeff Johnson and Chad, Mike Poehler, who's moved out of that department, Dan Schmitz, Seep Holthouse, also from the auditor's office, helped us with drawing legal descriptions for some of the new townships and cities that are split. So you've all had a chance to look at the maps. I believe they've been online and for the public to see, and also for you to look at, so. Most of the maps are fairly self-evident, so I don't think I'll belabor the maps in particular. I'm going to go right, Roxanne, to the next sheet there and go. So for 1B, I don't feel that the plan is as compact as some of the others. District 2's got a little leg out, and District 3 is spread out long and skinny across the bottom. And the population deviations are probably the highest on this plan of the 10 plans that we have. It's still a legal plan. It's under the 10%. But if our goal is always to shoot for as close to zero as possible, this is the highest one. In this one, District 1 includes all of Wade Park, which was a suggestion we received at our listening session to try to include as many of the minority populations in one district as possible. There's some drawbacks to that, too. District 1 gets to be pretty odd-shaped when we do that. District 3, as I mentioned earlier, extends pretty far west, and in all of the plans we have, all of you are going to have to run. So in one of our future meetings, you'll have to determine the rotation of who's going to run for a two-year term and who's going to run for a four-year term. And I'm sure all of you want the two-year term. Any questions on Plan 1B?
Dave, my question that I have is, and that relates to any of the plans we make, and it relates to my district having seen the most growth, and then considering then where we would be 10 years from now to redistrict again. So then, as I take a look at this plan right here, I've got the largest number in District 2. Is that not going to be the largest growth area, and so it's just going to get redistrict again? And so would we be proactive at least to at least have mine be equal or even lower than the other districts? Because from the start, it's already has a greater population.
Some of the other plans, too.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know how far ahead you want to get. I would prefer to kick the can down the road because I will not be here.
Okay, that's right. And I may not be here either, so.
In one of our earlier presentations, I think I highlighted the problems Stearns County has in that all the population is pushed up against the river. And if we could just move St. Cloud and Wade Park another 20 miles further west, that would solve our problem.
Yeah, no, and rightfully so. I understand Wade Park has got to go into the metro area, so there's no question about that, yeah.
Commissioner Mergen?
I guess since Joe brought things up here, I just want to talk about my concerns a little bit. My concern is to keep a balance between the rural and the urban districts. You know, as I went through these, about five of them I'm fine with because it keeps Districts 1 and 4, as I would classify as urban, and Districts 3 and 5 as rural. And District 2 is kind of a split half, split between rural and urban, the way I looked at it, which would be a fair balance.
Yeah, thank you. As Commissioner Persky mentioned, I think eventually it is going to become more of an urban, you know, District 2, we're going to have a hard time keeping rural sections into that because the west has to move east.
But currently, it would be about half and half, the way I look at it.
Depending on the plan we look at. Commissioner Clark?
Thanks, and I guess maybe we're just kind of doing the precursor things as we're going through, and really appreciate all of you and the GIS folks for keeping, trying to figure this out. As you pointed out, Wade Park will no longer be contiguous in District 2, so it cannot be there. I know that Commissioner Persky has spent a lot of time, and obviously, we all definitely are working there. I always feel compelled to point out, this will not surprise you, that in April 1st of 2020, our campuses did not have their students around. So St. Cloud, and to some extent Wade Park, and certainly on the east side of the river, are undercounted here even though they got counted elsewhere. So no matter what we do, there will still be more population that will be popped up. And I know this map has District 2 having more, some of the others have District 1 having more without counting students. And then in talking to the person who made the comment about Wade Park, my understanding, I mean, this is really partially about being attached to St. Cloud in some way. And obviously, we've got two different districts, that it's a better fit than Sartell, again, since it's not contiguous. That would be, okay, we'll leave everything else until later.
Okay. So Plan 2B is, Commissioner Persky does lower you below the average on this one. You're a little under. We shifted things around. I think District 1 and 4 are the same, yeah, the same populations as Plan B1, or 1B, excuse me. So we just tinkered around the edges as far as District 5 and District 2 and District 3 are just realigned slightly on that. But the St. Cloud-Wade Park areas are the same as in the first plan. This one lowers our, it's also compact. The deviation on this one is much lower than the other one. So this is probably, if you're looking at those two plans, this is probably a superior plan. In this one, District 3 includes all of St. Joe. And I guess it did in the last one, too, and all the commissioners need to run. 1C is definitely a different-looking plan. It's more similar to, I think, the current where you're at right now in that District 3 runs all the way from the northern end all the way down to the southern end. In this one, Wade Park is also still in District 1. And District 2 doesn't have quite as much of the rural aspects of it. I think the numbers are very good on this one, again.
Mr. Walsh, it would be fair to say that that's true for 2, 3, and 5, not for 1 and 4. Those are different than the current.
Okay.
Quite a bit. Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions on 1C?
The only thing I didn't like about that, that you're wrapping around the bottom, it doesn't seem reasonable to me. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, yes, that.
Keep that thought. There's other maps.
Every map has flaws depending on the chair you're sitting in.
Right, so for example, all of these remove a significant chunk of District 1.
They all have to go-
It removes downtown and through the university area, which has been a key part of that district. Okay.
Yes.
This one, looking at my district in particular, which currently runs from north to south, this one retains that. North of the county to the-
Would it be easier if you just went through them all and then we come back instead of? Mr. Lenzbier?
Repeat your comment from this morning, Jeff. You know, you had two urban districts, highly urban districts, and one sort of, and two rural.
That's quite a-
Was I actually paying attention?
Yeah, he said, oh, he said it.
Yeah, he mentioned just-
He already said it.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay. D is not one of my favorites because of the urban section. In this one, Commissioner Clark, we are able to give you both the, a little bit of Wade Park to include some of the minority piece, and then also, on the right-hand side, it gives you the college section again. But in order to do that, the St. Cloud and Wade Park, of course, Wade Park is split into two commissioners, which was one of the things we tried to avoid doing. And then the map there, to me, in the urban area, looks very irregular. It's doable. We have to spend a little more time on our end because we have to, the way we fix this for voters is we do ranges of addresses. So a block runs maybe 20 blocks long, but it goes through two commissioner districts. We have to figure out what house number it stops at and which one other. So one side of the street maybe, or whatever, so we have to figure that out. So the more straight lines, like Commissioner Noch has, those are easy to redistrict for the commissioner aspect. So we get the ballots right. And when we get a lot of irregular lines like this, we'll have to do a lot of testing in order to make sure we don't make any errors on that and put someone in the wrong precinct.
The other thing for voters, this is pretty confusing.
I would think it could be, but, you know. Voters are often confused when the lines are straight, so. But, yeah, I agree with that, too. The, where are we at here? Can we look at the plan section? Okay, great. So the plan is pretty compact except for that urban section. The population deviation from the average numbers are also very good. It does split Wade Park into two commissioner districts, 1 and 4. And again, all the commissioners need to run, so. 2D is a variation of that in that it keeps District 1 and 4, I think, about the same, and it extrins District 3 all the way across the bottom. I actually didn't think this was too bad, but I don't think anybody else agrees with me, so. So the observations are the plan isn't as compact as some. The deviation is very good, and Wade Park is still split. And then District 3 runs from east to west, which it's not as compact as some, I guess is the way we would say it. Are we ready to move to 1E?
Sure.
The 1E map is, I don't think too bad. District 3 has Wade Park. So there would be four commissioners representing the metro area on that one. Possibility of that, yes. Or part of their, you know, if you consider Wade Park and Sartell and St. Cloud to be in that, so. The map doesn't look really too bad. If I go to the plan, the plan is fairly compact. The deviations are all under 5%. Then, as I said, Wade Park is split between 1 and 3, and all the commissioners need to run, so. How we doing? Okay. I'm looking to see the, oh, yeah. So 1F, the difference between 1E and 1F is, I think, relatively small, and it deals with how Wade Park is split. So in 1F, District 3 has part of Wade Park, and District 4 has part of Wade Park. And District 1 does not have any of Wade Park, but it does have more of the university area of the southern section there. So on the plus side, the plan is compact. The deviations are pretty good. There's some that are better, but they're still under 5%. Remember, our goal is under 10. Wade Park is split between two commissioner districts, I think is a negative, and all the commissioners need to run. Plan 1G, I think, is a very good plan. It's compact. The deviations look good. Wade Park goes to District 4. District 1 has the downtown business areas and the college. There's still some, you know, two commissioners that handle the rural areas. The deviations are all under 5. They're a little higher than some other plans, but they're still very good historically compared to some of the ones we've looked at. Let's go to H. Last and certainly, but not least, similar in the urban area to the previous plan. But District 3 is, I got a different configuration to it. It runs all the way up. It's kind of a, goes back- It's kind of a, goes back to what we did 10 years ago, where we have a, a buffer around the metro area, and it includes a lot of lakes, as you can see on the map. And then, and then District Five has that, the three, the three townships at the bottom are a little, it's not as contiguous as, so I think my observations, Roxanne, are the plan is not as, as contiguous as some, especially for District Five. Population deviations are good. Wade Park is in District Four again, and all the commissioners need to run. So as briefly as possible, those are my, are our observations on this.
So, last slide here. To get the conversation started, this is what I looked at with the understanding of the redistricting principles and what I understand some of the commissioners are looking for. I listed the five plans that I thought we may want to eliminate, and then the other plans to consider are on the bottom. That's my perception. That may not be the correct perception, but that's at least where I thought we could start the conversation, so.
Just for the record, there were two other, there's no As, and those were the first ones I did, and they were, they were bombs. They weren't even legal, so we didn't present them.
Well, it's just a general conversation piece, I'm assuming?
Yeah. You know, I did, I pulled out 1B because the population variance is over 8%. You know, we are trying to get one, you know, everybody has equal vote representation, and 8% is, is the highest by far. No other plan is over 5%. So if you were to get challenged, if you pass this one, this would be your biggest chance of getting challenged. 1D I took out because Wade Park is split, and the St. Cloud lines are confusing, as Dave mentioned. 2D is the same thing, and also District Three is not compact. 1E, District Three has Wade Park. I didn't think we wanted to have all the commissioners possibly being from the metro area. And then 1F is similar to that also. Those are the five that I thought maybe we didn't, didn't want to go where we want to go, so.
I guess, I'll start just because I did kind of rank my choices, too. And actually, my number one was 1G. And part of the thing I looked at was kind of looking at the school district side of it, because you get BBE, then it's still not split. And if, if Three goes further west, it might split all your school district. You know, not, I don't know if that's a big issue or not, but that's kind of how I.
So you liked 1Gs?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I think today, we're not trying to pick a plan. We're trying to eliminate, to get to a smaller numbers, if that's possible. If we can't do that, that's fine, too. It's just your work's going to be a little harder.
That's what I was asking when I slid this up. Are we trying to accomplish?
I could live with what you got picked there.
In my perfect world, we would be able to whittle down the plans a little bit today, and I know you have until the end of April to make a decision. But for our purposes, if we could make a final decision next week, not required. But if it came to that, I know we have the public hearing, but if you could, if you were all pretty well, had your minds made up from looking at these, it would give us an extra two weeks to make our changes before filing starts, and then we'd get pretty busy. And so it would give us an extra cushion, you know, in which to change all the, the street addresses to the correct.
I, I think it'd help the public, too, if you narrowed it down, you know, so they know which ones you're actually serious about. And 10 years ago, we narrowed it to three. This proposal has it narrowed to four, and it's just a starting point.
Yeah.
Just, just, excuse me, Commissioner, just for refreshing, so we, if we wait till the last date to do this, that's at the end of April, and filing opens May, May 17, so.
I'd like to.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
See us also consider property types. And what I was looking at is where the apartments were. And, you know, so my apartments are challenging and places to run, but gosh, you know, somebody's got to represent them. So the population density, you know, getting back to Jeff's comment of having highly urban districts, two of them at least, and, and two mostly rural, and then Joe's area would be a mix. But anyway, yeah. So the ones across the bottom are the ones you'd, you'd like to see?
So a question I have is, I think 2D, even with what I'm going to just put out there, really doesn't fit with what Jeff had said, and I certainly agree with that, having two more metro, one that's kind of a mix, et cetera. But whether it's 2B, 1C, or 1D, you could also look at doing with St. Cloud and Wade Park what we're done with G and H. That actually fits with what Commissioner Lenzmeyer is talking about, too. And again, that's just that part of the district. But I don't know where either Commissioner Persky or Mergan, where you might be thinking about 1D, if that's even something, if, if the St. Cloud-Wade Park were changed.
Commissioner Mergan?
I had, as I went through this, I had four of them that I would eliminate as unacceptable, and they were 2B, 1D, 1E, and 1F, because it doesn't keep the rural, the two rural.
Repeat those.
2B or not 2.
Yeah, I was wondering about, so St. Joe, because of the St. Joe part, would that be accurate?
Yeah.
I'm guessing, just, just so that I've got some idea.
It doesn't keep the rural.
Yep. Because it includes the St. Joe.
All right.
The ones again?
The ones that I would eliminate personally as unacceptable would be 2B, 1D, 1E, and 1F.
So you would add 2B to the top, you'd take that one out of consideration?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
But I would include 1B as part of the consideration.
Yeah, the concern I have with the 1B is it's not very.
Commissioner Persky?
I, I'm pretty much similar. I, I would take 2B out. I'm fine with 1C, 1G, and 1H.
1C?
1G and 1H. Look at the bottom.
The bottom.
Lee, on the screen, just taking out 2B. In regards to the school district, that would keep it pretty consistent, I would think, And I think that would, Steve, and Jeff, you would be better off with the school districts there, too, then.
And I think 1B would also take care of that situation.
The variance, though, is so high.
Wouldn't, wouldn't split a school district.
Yeah.
But if the variance is over 8%.
The variance is a little high there, but.
Yeah. And actually, my suggestion wouldn't change that. If 1C did what 1G and 1H do with St. Cloud and Wade Park, then I think that would be fine. As Lee knows, I've got some pretty strong feelings about kind of keeping that downtown, the hospital downtown through the university, which means then the university and SCTCC remain in One, kind of that economic education area.
So you'd be looking for, to tweak a map here?
Yeah, tweak a map if we did 1C, but G and H from that standpoint's fine. I just couldn't figure out how to make the math. I mean, splitting up Wade Park, if it wasn't the concern about confusion and voters, there's, you know, those neighborhoods, they start all kind of, they're, they're great. I mean, they're great. I just can't figure out how, as your, as your map showed, it's hard to do Wade Park and North St. Cloud. There also was, the city of St. Cloud has, I, I think you were trying not to go into another ward, but there is, under their new map, there is one other quote-unquote North St. Cloud precinct from Ward Four, that's Ward 4-1, that's also north of Division. That's not in anything, but I think that's because you were trying not to split them up. Is that accurate? It probably means another, it probably means a mother ballot for some people, so that doesn't.
Which ones are you referring to, Commissioner?
Well, I didn't see, and maybe I'm misreading it, but it looks like, since there was talk about north of Division, Ward 4-1 is north of Division. But that would split up a ward, but that would, that is part of, right, so we're not, I mean, we're trying not to, obviously, right now, District One and Four split one of the wards already, which is Ward One. So the, the question is, is are you trying to keep kind of geographic things together or not? But I think it would cause some confusion from a ballot standpoint, right?
Nothing, nothing's perfect if we would keep all the wards full.
And believe it or not, that's like a couple of our smaller communities, that's the only reason why I'm asking, it's population-wise.
Commissioner Clark, did, what, did you have four of them that you would eliminate?
Well, the, for me, partially looking at what all of the rest of you are saying makes it a little bit harder. I think 1G probably is the one that would be closest, although it doesn't go north and south. Like, I think Commissioner Mergan was hoping for, but I was okay with 1G, 1H. The, and if we moved, if we moved around in 1C, or I don't think 2B is acceptable to Commissioner Mergan, but in 1C, if we moved around Districts One and Four like G and H, I think that would be fine.
Got that, Roxanne.
Lee, did you have any that you would eliminate right off the top?
No, I didn't eliminate any. I took the opposite approach, and that was what I'd like to see. And the ones that I'd like to see here, 1C, 1B, 2B, and maybe possibly 1H. But mostly, you know, we all have different concerns. The school district idea was interesting, and I came at it from where the apartments are. And apartments are tough places to run, but I'm also familiar with them, so.
It seemed like you were looking at having, having Four be a more condensed area, which means the townships.
I want, I want density.
Right. So you're looking at density. I was looking at subcontinuity with part of the current district.
Well, it certainly sounds like the 1C, 1G, and 1H, there's consensus on those three.
With some tweaks.
I don't care for 1H. I think that's kind of convoluted.
Wraps around too much.
That's just my opinion. I, I mean, if you're, it doesn't matter what commissioner, you're in that district, if you're in Three, you know, you're probably, you know, somebody in the green below is going to reach out to you. I, I just, I don't think it's very conducive.
So, Steve, would you switch then from 1H to 1G? That's okay with you?
No.
Yeah.
Because I just looked at that as, when you talk, you know, Jeff said two at the rural setting. I mean, District Two is still going to have some rural, but in 10 years, that might totally change, too, but.
10 years, it's hard to predict exactly what the, what the trend's going to be.
And the commissioners 10 years from now might decide to go to a seven-person board, which would change everything.
Yes, I think we have a couple of members in the audience, we're glad you brought that up.
Tell us when you've got enough to go on to advance the cause. I'm hungrier than I am stubborn right now.
So where do we go from here?
Well, do you want to make a motion, or you want us just to, I guess you tell me?
I think we're too early for a motion. We've got some consensus.
Right, some narrowing. It does seem like we've got some understanding of the rural and urban part. And like I said, personally, I mean, right now, 1C is something I have challenges with without continuing to keep the thousands of people who are in that district right now. But if, if another map could be done that looks like 1C, but has the One and Four like G or H, that would be fine.
Well, could, could we agree on eliminating some?
Sounds to me like, I think 1E, everybody could eliminate, the way, just from what I'm hearing.
Well, but the ones that are listed to be eliminate, could we eliminate all of those?
Yes.
I would like to see 1B can still in there.
Well, that.
That's the variance.
The variance is too high on that one. The variances.
It sounds like it probably shouldn't have been given to us. It's so high.
I think 2B, excuse me, I think 2B was created to address the variance issue, if I recall.
I would, I would like to see 2B eliminated, because that one doesn't keep the 50/50 balance of rural and urban districts.
I, can you eliminate that one, too?
Well, and, and, well, this is not a final thing. I think we want to narrow the field.
Sounds like we want both the Bs eliminated.
Well, it sounds like, at least as they currently exist, the ones that split Wade Park could be eliminated, whether or not there could be some reconfiguration so it actually works.
Why don't we rate these by variances?
Well, then you also have population. Some have a lot more population somewhere.
Yeah.
But that's different than variance. It's not always the same thing.
Well, how about we go back to Randy's comment?
What if you took the list of eliminate and add 2B to that? Are you there, and then if 1C needs some tweaking on St. Cloud stuff, we could do that?
Okay.
Yeah. Cheryl and Lee can argue, you know, arm wrestle over those, too.
So then we'd, we'd have four plans, because you have 1C, and then we'd have a 1C with a change in it. And, and I think it would be helpful for the board to take action to eliminate some from consideration.
Do you need us to take actual action, or can it be like we sometimes do, where you've got enough guidance?
I can do that, too, if you'd like, sure.
It sounds like we got three plans that kind of agree on 1C, 1G, and 1H. Keep those in.
And then tweaking 1C a little bit in the urban areas.
Yeah, we'll have a 2C.
Get it down to those three.
Right.
1C, repeat that, Jeff.
1C, 1G, and 1H.
And then a modification.
Plus, there's going to be another variation of, we won't just change 1C. 1C is what it is. We'll go to 2C, and that'll include the variations.
So we'll bring back, then, in two weeks, those four maps.
Sounds good.
Maybe I missed one. 1C, 1D, 1H.
And there'll be a 2C.
No, two Cs.
They're going to make up another C.
So that our districts look like G and H.
So basically, 2B will be taken out of the bottom, Lee, and replaced with 2C. That's going to be created.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Good? Does that sound good with everybody?
Yeah.
No, we've got to get, we've got to make progress, so.
Okay.
I don't think, do we necessarily need a motion?
No, we didn't. They just want guidance.
Consensus is fine.
Yep.
I'm hungrier than I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work, because that's a lot of work you guys did to get this far. I mean, that's pretty.
The hard part for him is the dumb question.
Okay, so with that being said, we're at issues by Commissioner? Commissioner Clark, do you want to buzz in quick? Or don't you have anything?
I need to think, so don't start with me.
Okay.
Please.
Commissioner Persky?
Friday, Highway 23 Coalition meeting, annual meeting, so if you can make it, be there. Also, there's going to be.
Friday what?
Friday, Highway 23 Coalition luncheon, so at the Park Center, so if you haven't been there, a chance to see that. I was ice fishing over the weekend. Let me just say, stay off the ice after this, today. And if you do go on, wear a life jacket. Between now and the freeze-up, wear a life jacket if you're on the water. And then also, just a comment, the gentleman that was in here talking about the Mobile Home Park, that issue has been going on for years, even times since I was mayor, so there are many issues to address, so.
Oh, yeah. In my opinion, if, if the county's involved, it's the health department.
Yeah, and there are those types, health and safety issues, yeah.
Daryl, are you ready now?
Yes. And of course, my brain just got sidetracked with that. So two things. One, very excited about the bridge at Highway 75, the, the new funding that's coming. It's a big deal, so really appreciate Congressman Emmer and our senators for their work on that, and to our wonderful engineer and others for working to get the rest of that funding. That's.
rest of that funding, that's pretty darn incredible. And then, it kind of came up earlier, reminding everybody a number of our legislative priorities are in play, and as they're asking us to contact our, our delegation, please continue to do so, and appreciate, again, the work on that.
Good. Commissioner Lenzbier?
Interesting article in The Times on the opinion page about short wave radio in the Ukraine. The, back when I was first elected, the lead, the sheriff that was leaving and was going to be replaced by Sheriff Kostryba, was a guy named Charlie Graff. Beyond being quite a character, Charlie was a short-wave radio hyper enthusiast, to the point where he's got a, he got a shortwave system set up in the industrial park in Wake Park, and that played a significant role in the first 72 hours of the Grand Forks flood of 97, 1997. It was the only way they could have had to communicate. And the way they got the equipment up there, this pleasure land donated their biggest motorhome to Wake Park, and they loaded all the stuff in there and ran it up there. So, shortwave radio has had some local impact as well, isn't it, in the Ukraine?
Jeff?
I have nothing.
Okay, just a couple of things. Actually, last week, I participated in University of Minnesota Extension, had Ag Horizons workshop in Freeport, and it was interesting, they invited producers, business owners, to come and discuss the impacts of ag in Stearns County. And it'll be interesting, because the, the university is one who requested Stearns County, just because Stearns County is so diverse when it comes to even the ag sectors. A lot of counties are either strong in row crops, or beef, or something else. So they've kind of, this is kind of like a study they're doing on the effects and how, how to balance that out, and maybe how some other counties can maybe do some marketing or, or change their makeups to be more diverse, so you don't get the up and down, the drastic effects on the ag economy. So that was interesting, there'll be more to come on, on the results from that. And then, the only other thing I have is, I have to take my wife to a procedure on Monday, so I won't be at Chasm, so I don't know if we want...
You won't be where?
At Chasm. We have Chasm next Monday.
Yeah, I can do that.
So, are you going to call in?
I can do that.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know, so somebody could fill my chair or call in.
Jeff and Joe usually cover that too.
I can make some stuff up too.
Okay. All right, the last thing we have is, we're going to have a meeting with the Stearns County Township Officers Board of Directors immediately after this meeting, so I'll adjourn this meeting for that. Thank you.
Maybe.